Recording in progress.
All right, the time is now six o'clock. I'll call tonight's meeting to order. Roll call has been taken and we'll go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for that. Next up is to approve tonight's agendas. Their motion to approve the agenda as written, moved by Vice Chair Walker Andrews, second by Trustee Wake. Any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, all those in favor of approving tonight's agenda as written, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present? Next up are to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of October 28, 2025. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by Trustee Wake, second by Trustee Walsh. Any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, all those in favor for approving those meeting minutes, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present? Next up is the school connection, and so I'll go ahead and turn it over to Superintendent Hill.
Yes, tonight, we're, yeah, come on up, Jennifer. We're excited to welcome Jennifer Courtney, Principal of Big Sky, and she's going to talk a little bit about her building and her staff and all the amazing things that are going on at Big Sky High School. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you. Hopefully Heidi West will join me. She's one of our new ag teachers, so hopefully she'll make her way here. She's at the end, fortunately. So I wanted to break this down into some of the highlight areas that we have happening at Big Sky, with of course first being academics. What I hope that you'll see in the academic highlights, that it just continues to show our desire to meet every student at their own entry point. I think that's something that our staff is really good at, is finding these, we call them onramps, for each and every student, no matter where they are academically, socially, emotionally, whatever their plans are post-high school. And so having these entry points and an increase of being seen and recognized for those level of engagements is something that we find pretty positive. The first thing, and there's some information in your board packet about Eagle Edge. This is a program that I've been in the works with Missoula College for about the last three years. I was fortunate last spring to travel with them. They are part of a Rurals Pathway grant, and what was profound for me was to learn that really 70% of two-year colleges across the nation are made up of high school students. And so we really are starting to become the junior college, and that's not necessarily new information for me, but I think transforming that to our staff and building a culture that is supportive of college learners at the high school level. So it's currently in draft form. We plan to start with this year's ninth grade class, and it's pretty flexible. What I've told staff as we embark on this journey and spend time partnering is that really for any class that they can't take at Big Sky High School as a dual-credit or an IB class, they can just take it Missoula College. So low stakes, it's not like a student's going to miss out on something if we're not offering that class on our campus, but really the goal is to try and afford kids as many opportunities within our building so that they see themselves as college learners in a supportive environment. They can fail in a way that maybe when the stakes are a little higher and they're on campus, might feel a little overwhelming or intimidating. As part of that, you know, students can earn the dual-credit in both IB and for teachers who have those qualifications. We also hope to use some of that transformational and competency-based coursework down the road so that, you know, students are able to participate in things even if they don't see themselves as college-bound. The other piece of information that's in your packet is about our IB scholar program. I'm happy we have a couple of IB teachers in the audience tonight, too. We have 101 testers this year taking 249 tests. That's the highest number we've ever had at Big Sky. We have one of the highest numbers of IB testers of the four high schools in the entire state, and we're an IB for all school. So again, that entry point for all students to be able to see themselves as a rigorous learner, so we're pretty proud of those numbers. The IB scholar program was developed by Katie DeGrandprey. She'd seen it at other high schools. And if you're familiar with IB, you know that the diploma program is the most rigorous, it's the highest achievement that an IB student can earn. They're taking six IB exams, they're completing the DP coursework, as we call it. The scholar is just that level right below that. We have many students who don't want to be a full diploma candidate. It ebbs and flows year to year. Some years we have three DP candidates. I think this year's junior class, we have 25. We'll see how many actually complete the diploma. The scholar allows them to earn this kind of accolade and be an IB learner, but not have to complete the full IB diploma coursework. And they'll be recognized at graduation, just like our diploma candidates are. I think our team has decided that the DP candidates will now start to wear hoods at graduation, so really giving that next level up for students. I think some things that we're working on within our IB for all is increasing students' ability to see themselves as capable of taking an IB exam. We've talked about even scholarshipshiping students who have said, "I absolutely don't want to take the exam," just so we can start to norm all students across the board taking it, so we know how we can increase the support for students in the classroom. We also have an exorbitant number of females taking the exams. We'd like to see our male students increase in those numbers. We also would like to increase our BIPOC student population taking exams. We currently have five Asian students, two Native students, one Hispanic, and one Native Hawaiian student taking an exam. And so we'd like to increase just the ability for kids to participate in those things and see themselves again as rigorous learners. We continue in 14 years Health Science Academy. Trevor was part of the inception of that, so year 14 is pretty incredible. One thing new for our program this year is we have a class in the schedule now called HSA certifications. So our students have always been able to, for at least the last five or six years, earn a certification in either CNA, Certified Nurse Assistant, CMA, Certified Medical Assistant. We've had phlebotomy in the past, EMT, but now the class is embedded in the schedule, and that's just been a really supportive way for students to complete that coursework. Our community partner is Miles City, but we're also, we just actually today got approval with St. Pat's, so they'll be doing their practicum hours at St. Pat's and not having to necessarily travel outside of the Missoula community, so that's been, that's a positive win for us. We are in our third year of the Media Business Academy. One upcoming highlight is they're having their first Bright Futures Committee. So this is a team of staff, students, and parents who are going to just meet and talk about how to continue to improve the MBA experience for students, bring in community partners. And I think one of the things that we're fortunate about is because we're in year three, we have another year to develop that fourth-year outcome. As the Labor Department changes what they see as recognizable credentials, it's an opportunity for us to maybe do some pivots of where we thought the MBA students might be, so we've got a year to build that and do that in partnership with our parents and our students. Fortunately, both academies are supported by an academy coordinator who's also a CTE expert, so it's really beneficial for me to have somebody in the building who can kind of take those roles on and ensure that we're moving the needle forward when it comes to that transformational learning. And CTE is a tricky one, and making sure that you're following all the rules and policies when it comes to funding and things like that. We also have three new classes. I did not put those on the slideshow. I can't, I'm surprised I forgot those. So one that we're really excited about is freshman seminar. It's not required, but we've got about 90% of our current freshmen in freshman seminar. What we found is that we needed onboarding for ninth graders. They just weren't really prepared for high school and how to be a high school student. And as you know, we have many feeder schools, so coming in from all these different middle schools and just not being ready to be a high school student. So they do lots of fun things, lots of team-building and collaborative work together, but they also learn how to check their email, learn how to check Infinite Campus. Their teachers had them reach out to all the club advisors and learn when the different clubs and activities meet. So it's just been a really fun way to get kids acclimated to high school. We are also teaching two sections of high school seminar, and we're using the JMG, the Jobs for Montana Graduates Program. We actually just had a meeting last week, and we'll receive some grant money for our students to be able to go to the Spring Conference. So it's nice to see them bookmarked, freshmen taking freshman seminar, juniors and seniors taking high school seminar. I'd love to see that as a required class for our graduates, but a great way for kids to prepare themselves for life after high school. And then the third new class is Eagle Empowerment. We have a dynamite of a student government advisor, and she's built a program for students to be leaders, even if they're not in student government. And so we have two sections of this class where students get to do everything from leading, you know, productive conversations in the building, but also planning the GOAT game. So they do really fun things, and they're really energized, and I think it's created a system within our school that's cohesive amongst all of our students. I wanted to also hit on some of the social-emotional pieces. This is our second year of having the RBHI, or the Rural Behavioral Health Initiative, screener in our building. We do an initial screener of all Big Sky students throughout the first couple of months of school. You can see our data there. We've currently screened 692 students, and then you can see the breakdown there of where students have screened based on that. And it's a pretty quick screener. Students can opt out, of course. Parents can opt their kids out of the screener if they're not in attendance. I think it's been really nice to see the partnership with all of our support team, counselors, social worker, aware team, partnership healthcare. And I think it's been a nice way to capture kiddos that maybe wouldn't normally have been on anybody's radar and allow for some quality conversations about how to support them, both in and out of school. We also have our first year of an aware CSCT team. We always had Western prior to that, and obviously they've merged now together. We currently have 10 students on the aware team and continuing to grow. And then we are in our first year of our partnership healthcare, so we have a therapist in our building. She currently has 13 students on her caseload, and you can see meeting 67 therapy sessions thus far and continuing to grow. I mean, every week when I talk to the support team, they're adding more and more referrals. So our goal would be to grow both the aware and the partnership teams, to have a second aware team, and then potentially a second healthcare partnership in the building. Okay. I'm going to shout out first, you know, a big football game Friday night, so hopefully tune into NFHS as our boys take down Billings West. A lot of participants, again, something we're really proud of. Jack Young, our AD, has done a really nice job of not only quantifying students participating in things, but really does a nice job of enforcing and encouraging kids to be participants, not only in sports, but extracurriculars as well. We had 344 participants in our fall sports and getting ready to gear up after our boys win state for winter sports, so we're excited about the upcoming winter season. We also, our FFA team just went to nationals. Our food science team took ninth, our meats judging team took silver, our floriculture team took seventh, and the team gold, so a lot of success with our FFA team. We just had five Olympians at state basketball for Special Olympics, and they had a great time. That's a bigger team than we've had in the last couple of years, so nice to see those participants growing. We celebrated them, just like we do all of our other athletes going to state, so down the trophy hallway with all the hooting and hollering and the music, and it was just lovely to see all their smiles. And then, of course, our musicians and singers just attended All-State Music Festival, so lots of great extracurricular things. And then the Ag Center, I don't know, did Heidi make it? Nope. So a lot going on at the Ag Center, even though it's kind of on the side of Big Sky, it certainly is a big part of who we are and what we do within our facility. In September, we were fortunate to hire Scott Courtney, the other half of this Courtney, to take on the role of Schoolhouse Meats Operations and Marketing Supervisor. They recently hosted the Mountain Plains Regional Farm-to-School Summit in October, so the day before the bison harvest. They had educators and government officials from Kansas, Missouri, Wyoming, and Montana, and they toured the facility and just learned how to incorporate this kind of full farm-to-table into their facilities, which was great. They've also taken in significant donations. They've got community partnerships with Cabela's Bass Pro, Montana Knife Company, so really trying to grow the partnerships that are out there. And then, of course, having those conversations with Missoula College, a goal being that they would eventually have a program. They're right next door, so it'd be great that they could utilize that facility as well. And then as far as experiential learning, Heidi, who is one of our new teachers out there, just took advantage of the Advanced Opportunity Grant and took a group of students out to Marshall Mountain, and they did some trail cleanup. And as a new teacher, she learned a lot about time-out in the field with students on a cold day and reminding them to make sure they bring their packed lunch when they get off the bus, so lots of good learning there for both students and staff. We're in the process of having some discussions about a lamb enclosure, so we've had some issues with coyotes and the sheep out there, and so the lamb enclosure is something Burley and I are having some conversations about and what that might look like to protect the sheep that are out there. And then last, we are in the works with Missoula College to talk about, not just students at the Ag Center, but because of proximity, offering the CDL license to students. It's fairly expensive, but we'd like to send a cohort of seniors through the program just to see if it's something that's feasible for our students to obtain, so we've got a meeting scheduled in a couple of weeks to talk with them about growing that partnership for CDL. So that's a little bit about Big Sky.
Do any trustees have any questions for Principal Courtney? Vice Chair Walker Andrews?
Yeah, you started off talking about Eagle Edge and dual-credit programs and the like, and then I presume IB courses are also getting college credit. So approximately how many students sort of graduate with how many course credits for college?
The goal through this program would be that students could earn in their high school career 30 college credits. It's the general studies program, so not a full associate, they'd have to get an additional 30 credits, but, you know, I think long-term, it would be wonderful to see them earn a full associate. Missoula College and the university is also doing a lot of work to create more channeled general studies certificates, so they're looking to build specifically a health study general certificate, business general study. So as they're kind of developing theirs, we'll ebb with what they're doing, but 30 credits would be the goal. Predominantly with Health Science Academy students, they could do almost 100% of those with the coursework between dual-credit and the IB classes. One of the tricky things is with IB, you're either taking a standard level, an SL class, or a higher level, an HL class. And right now, there are some discrepancies if you look across all the universities in the state. What one school might deem as credit-worthy, if you score a five on an exam, the University of Montana might only give a lower credit for it. So there's some things at the university level that they need to work out, but the goal would be 30 credits.
Any other questions? CNN, thank you so much for your presentations.
Thank you.
All right, next up is public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the board as a body. It is not time for board response or the public to ask questions. Do not infringe on the right of privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. The Chair, Acting Chair, may interrupt or terminate an individual's speaker if the statements are out of order or personally directed to an individual. Any public comments?
Yes, we have Sarah Kries.
Okay, I can talk now, you all can hear me. Good evening, my name is Sarah Kreese, S-A-R-A-H-K-R-I-E-S. I'm a teacher at Big Sky High School. Thank you, board members, for your time tonight. I'm here to ask you to consider implementing a therapy dog policy at MCPS. I think noting the difference between therapy dogs and service dogs first is really important. A service dog is allowed in buildings through state and federal laws. Service dogs are there to provide specific assistance to an individual, for example, being able to smell if their handler is going to have a seizure, a seeing eye dog for someone who is visually impaired. On the other hand, therapy dogs are not, are only allowed in facilities by invitation. However, therapy dogs would not interfere and should not even interact with service dogs. That's something that therapy dogs are tested on. Therapy dogs have a handler who takes them on these visits to places such as a hospital or a nursing home. They're there to reduce stress and improve mental health in these environments. Last year, we had a few therapy dogs at Big Sky. In my own classroom, I had my dog Dale present in my morning classes with me. I saw the effect that Dale had on my students every day. For example, in specifics, Dale provided comfort to a transgender student with autism who experiences food insecurity. He was having a panic attack in class. Dale rested his head on the student's lap while the student was able to come through his panic attack and stay and participate in class that day. My students drew pictures of Dale every day. They snuggled with him, they petted his head as he would walk around the classroom while they took a test. He even signed a few yearbooks by dipping his paw on a stamp pad. This summer, we were notified that all dogs, including therapy dogs, would not be allowed in MCPS schools. I can see the anxiety among my students be much greater than last year, especially on test days. As a high school teacher, I see my students struggle with the current world of social media and AI. We all know the reality of rising rates of depression and suicide among students, particularly teenage girls. My students just last week told me how they feel so much pressure to never mess up. Furthermore, many of my students have trauma and difficulties, including chronic absenteeism, crippling anxiety, and food insecurity. Therapy dogs reduce stress and anxiety and promote a sense of belonging at our school. I understand why MCPS cannot allow just any dog into a school. However, therapy dogs have to go through rigorous training and certification programs while also being insured under the organization. Locally, Wind River Kennels offers a certification. The therapy dog program at Wind River, through which my own dog is certified and insured, requires dogs to go through a temperament test, a canine good citizenship test, which is an American Kennel Club certification, and a therapy dog test. I think that MCPS can easily solve this problem by only allowing certified and insured therapy dogs by the principal's invitation. I'm here for my students once again today who have asked me to bring Dale back into the classroom. I hope that you will consider a policy of implementation regarding therapy dogs, and thank you so much for your time. I need to sign right here.
All right, we did receive written correspondence, which was already reviewed by the trustees, and next up are announcements from the superintendent. So I'll turn it over to Superintendent Hill.
Thank you. First, I just want to recognize that today is Veterans Day, and thank our veterans, some of whom happen to be our employees, for their service and sacrifice, their courage, their dedication, and how they protect the freedoms that we get to enjoy. And today, we honor their commitment and are grateful for all they have given, so thank you to our veterans. Also want to just let trustees know that this is conference week for our schools, so a lot of our teachers and staff and administrators are busy having conferences, and some of you probably have children in the system who, maybe you're enjoying some of those conferences as well, but I think it's great. This is also the last week for our climate survey. Every year, we survey staff, community, students about how our schools are doing. We have a set survey that we use. It's part of our accreditation process. We do it annually. We review the results, we share those results with staff, and then we have conversations about how we can be even better. Going to do a quick update on Cold Springs. In case you hadn't heard, we had some issues at Cold Springs, which I know you're aware of, and it's made the media. Just to give a little quick background, we were told that the west wing of Cold Springs was, has some structural issues, and that it was recommended by a structural engineer that we not occupy the building out of an abundance of caution for the safety of those who've been using the space. In particular, the west wing is occupied by the Missoula Childcare Advantage, which houses seven providers who provide childcare to families in Missoula, so really unfortunate. Burley has been working with engineers and contractors to do some additional assessments of that space. If you want to imagine what it would be like, you have to basically unzip the building, you have to pull the sheet rock off, pull the insulation out of the ceilings. It's not something that's readily visible to the eye when they're doing these investigations, so it's a room-by-room assessment, and so they're working on that. As of today, we've been working with our partners to identify other spaces, and as of right now, we've identified spaces for everybody who's been involved either within another facility at MCPS. But we also recognize that it's a huge challenge, it's a huge inconvenience, there's been a lot of time, effort, resources that have been put into those spaces, and so we're just trying to work with everybody to make sure that we can do that. Also, on Wednesday evening, Burley and I will meet with all the providers if they want to come, ask questions. We'll have the structural engineer present as well, so they can ask any specific questions that they may have. But, you know, finally, just want to thank all of our community people who have stepped up, including the city of Missoula, who've offered space at base camp, they've been reaching out for us, and the YMCA, not YMCA, but United Way, all the efforts that are going into making that possible, so. This week, we're also hosting approximately 40 people who are engaged in a restorative justice, restorative practices, training sponsored here at MCPS. It's been great. I got to pop in today, they invited me into a circle. I felt really uncomfortable for a moment because I was not part of their circle, and but it's just been really, really amazing to see. We have community members, we have staff, we have administration who are taking part of that, and the feedback has been awesome. Just a couple reminders, next Monday, 1 to 3, Board Retreat, right here in the boardroom. And next Thursday, the November 20th, not next Thursday, but November 20th, is the Board of Public Ed tour, so Board of Public Ed and the Interim Education Funding Committee and some others will be using this space to conduct business, but then we'll also be taking them on some facility tours and program tours of MCPS, so we're excited to showcase some of the amazing things that are happening in our schools. And then the 4th Tuesday, November 25th, there is no board meeting. And that's it.
All right, thank you for that. Next up is Item 8, which is the Consent Agenda. There is no board discussion for the consent agenda items, are routine items. There'll be two motions at elementary and to high schools. There are an elementary motion to approve the consent agenda items. Moved by Trustee Whit, second by Trustee Walsh. There is no board discussion. Any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, all the elementary trustees in favor for approving the consent, elementary consent agenda items, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present? Next up, is there a high school motion to approve the consent agenda items? Moved by Trustee Davies, second by Trustee Wake. There is no board discussion. Any public comment? CNN, all trustees in favor of approving the high school consent agenda items, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present? Thank you. Next up is Item 9, which is new business, and first up is the, first up is a lot of Denise Williams. So first one is to approve the call for school elections for elementary school trustees, Resolution 2026-3E, and I'll just hand it over to Denise.
Thank you. And I just want to make some overall comments. There's five resolutions here, one for each election, okay? So that's why there's, my name's on there so much, because there's five different resolutions. But basically, what happened is in the last legislative session, they passed House Bill 406, which revised the election timelines. You know, we always have our trustee and levy elections in May, and we'll still have one in May, it will be on May 5th of 2026. But the timelines were revised as followed. So for the resolutions, you have to call for an election now 145 days prior to Election Day. That was previously 70 days before Election Day, so what we were normally going to do in February, we're now doing in November. The deadline is actually December 11th, but our next board meeting isn't until December 16th, I think, so that's why- So that's why we're here tonight in November, passing these resolutions, so we can meet the deadline. Let's see. Candidate filings. They have always opened 145 days before Election Day, but now they close 85 days before Election Day instead of 40. So the candidate filings for the open trustee positions, they open December 11th and they close on February 9th. So it's, it's quite a bit more, it's like 40 days, 45 days, you know, earlier. And then there's write-in candidate deadlines that follow that. And then the most, the other significant deadline is the ballot certification, where we have to finalize all the language on our ballots. And most importantly, that would be the amount that we want to, want to run for a levy election. So that new date is March 2nd for this next election. So that's, again, that's why we are wanting to pass these resolutions tonight. We're just going to call for the elections. We've got an elementary trustee election. Go ahead. Do you have a question?
Trustee Witcher.
Just to clarify, just because we're calling for a resolution of the election does not necessarily mean that we are going to be asking our voters to vote on specific things. We have to get it on the calendar now.
Yes.
And just so we can have time to decide what to do and move forward with.
Right. So, so we have five resolutions, one for the trustee election for the elementary, one for the high school trustee eleme, or trustee election. I would like to run an elementary and a high school levy election. So there's two more. And then we want a placeholder for a high school safety levy. Again, like you said, that doesn't mean we're actually, I mean, we can cancel the election later. You know, we're going to have discussions about what those amounts will be. I really don't have any estimates for you tonight because we don't have February enrollment counts. I've just got to kind of crunch some numbers and review some things with you before, you know, we would set those amounts. We would have to set the amount if we're going to move forward on those elections by March 2nd.
Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
Yeah, I had one question because you said March 2nd, and I was just reading March 26. Am I just looking at the wrong place? Or say in the, in the high school general fund levy, the levy amount must be?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm reading off of an email we got from the county election administrator. So ballot certification is Monday, April 6th. So I was a month off. I'm sorry. So we would have till April 6th to do that. But they even backed that data by 10 days. I think so that the county and the election folks have time to assemble all those ballots and get them mailed out.
For the elementary and the high school trustee resolutions, whose seats are those?
Okay. I have that. That would be Jeff's position and the vacant position that Cohen had. Those are both for three-year terms. And then Lisa, that'd be High School D, which would be Lisa's position. That's for three years. And then High School C, which would be Leslie's, the position that Leslie filled for a one-year term, which is the remainder of that term.
Any other questions in regards to the resolutions? CNN, so we'll just go through each of them. The first one will be a elementary motion to approve the trustee resolution 2026 dash three E. Is there a motion to approve those? Moved by trustee Hayes, second by trustee Walsh. Any final comments from a trustee? CNN, any public comment? CNN, all elementary trustees in favor for the recommend, approving the recommendation? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Next up is the, to approve the call for school elections for high school trustees, District C and D, resolution 2026 dash three S. Is there a motion from a high school trustee? Moved by trustee Davies, second by trustee Wake. Any final trustee comments? CNN, any public comment? CNN, all trustees in favor for the recommendation? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. And so anything you need to add? District clerk on the general fund levies? Or do you, just one, go ahead. They're just placeholders, as you stated. Okay. All right. So next up would be a motion to approve the call for school elections for elementary general fund levy resolution 2026 dash four E. Is there a motion from an elementary trustee? Moved by trustee Hayes, second by trustee Witt. Any final trustee comments? CNN, any public comment? CNN, all trustees, elementary trustees in favor of approving the recommendation? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present, are present? Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the call for school elections for high school general fund levy resolution 2026 dash four S? Moved by Vice Chair Walker Andrews, second by trustee Wake. Any final trustee comments? CNN, any public comment? CNN, all trustees in favor for approving the recommendation? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. And finally, is there a motion to approve for the high school safety levy resolution 2026 dash five S? Moved by trustee Hayes, second by trustee Wake. Any final trustee comments? I have one. I just want to thank you and your team for all the work that you guys do on our behalf for the school district. Any public comment? CNN, all trustees in favor for approving the recommendation? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Thank you very much on those. And now we'll move on to B, which is personnel negotiations and policy. And first up is to approve an out-of-country travel request. And this is over to Assistant Superintendent Shattuck.
Thank you. And I would like to introduce Jessica Cook and Carrie Anderson to come up and talk about it. Thank you.
Can you please turn your mic on? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm Jessica Cook. I'm an English teacher and a co-advisor of the International Club at Big Sky High School.
Thanks, Amy. Good evening, trustees. My name's Carrie Anderson. I am also a Spanish teacher, or I am a teacher at Big Sky High School, and also a co-advisor of the International Club.
And we weren't 100% sure what to expect because this is our first time actually introducing an out-of-county or out-of-state travel request form, so I'm a little nervous. I apologize. We are really, really excited about this trip. We've had a partnership with Daienie Prefecture High School in Kumamoto, Japan for over 20 years. The last time that we went there, to my knowledge, I don't know anyone who's still at Big Sky who has that institutional knowledge. So I know that it was in the early 2000s. Maybe Trevor knows. But it's been a long time. So this trip is a long time coming. We actually hosted 10 students and two staff members from Kumamoto this September, just right out of the gate. And it was an amazing, really incredible visit. We're really proud of it. I think, I think when we counted all the students who had a meaningful connection with our visitors, so meaning that they participated in a cultural exchange activity. We did food. We did native and traditional, like, schoolyard games. And there was another that I'm blanking on right now.
Calligraphy.
Calligraphy. That was amazing. So we counted about 68 or 70 students who actually had meaningful contact with these students. So this is a program that we're growing and we're really, really excited about. And a parent approached us and said, so we can go there, right? And we said, no, 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 we can't get that together. And he said, yes, you can. So we have. And we ended up building an itinerary, which we're super excited about. The students will, the first day is spent in travel. The second, next following two days are spent in Tokyo, where we'll have the service of a local guide. The following day is in transit, using a bullet train from Tokyo to Kumamoto, and they would stop in Osaka for lunch, basically. And then a four-day homestay at Kumamoto High School, then returning to Tokyo on a bullet train, and then flying back home. And that's the nine days. We scheduled it over the MEA days to ensure that they would be missing a minimum of school days, although we're, we're, we're held to that schedule unfortunately because of, their school year doesn't match up exactly with ours, and they are kind of locked in by testing. We ran through almost week by week of the school year of when could we go and visit? And they said these, this is, this is the week. Either that or the first week of September, which is a hard no. Yeah.
Thank you, Jess. And we are partnering with a company called Global Travel Alliance. So a lot of the trustees, I'm certain, are familiar with EF Education First. It is a like-minded official company. So we would be having support and staff, and we are logged in. We have enrollees, and we have a person at our disposal. And also, we just really connected with the staff from Kumamoto as well. So we have the Global Travel Alliance Company as an ally and a resource. And we also have the administrators and the Japanese staff who we have relationships with as that other support piece. So we would be in great hands.
Any trustee questions? Trustee Davies.
This sounds fantastic. And I was, I think, in high school when a group went over there. So I think you're right, like, late 90s, early 2000s. And, but I'm really curious about how you're managing the costs for this trip and whether or not it's accessible to students who have the drive and the knowledge and the relationships but don't have the finances to go.
That's a good question. At this, I think, speed of putting the trip together, in large part, it is accessible to students who have the family wealth or who are able to take on a summer job because the final payment deadline is in July. And that's unfortunate. Our, our club mission really is to make travel accessible to everyone. One thing with this trip is that we foresee it as an ongoing, an ongoing exchange. So we're in talks too with a lot of freshmen. The majority of our club is freshmen, and we've just, we've been trying to grow that so that students know that they can access this travel with that same reason. We're starting a program where they can bank, similar to like what band and choir do, so where they can bank fundraising throughout the four years of high school with the plan of utilizing it in their junior or senior year for whichever trip happens to be scheduled. As for this trip, we're planning several fundraisers. We have a raffle that we're hopeful will allow them to accrue a lot of funds. We are expanding our, we do like a childcare night with the club, and we're hoping to make that a semi-monthly event. And I don't, I think that's about it for now.
Thank you. I am, the cap is under $4,000 per student, which for international travel is actually a pretty good price point. And that includes all of the perks of safety and insurance and the like. So that is a good question. And it really kind of just the expeditiousness of it would entail that kids and families will have to just kind of purchase this package.
Great. Are you aware of any possible financial support through the Mansfield Center? They work a lot with Japan. I know their financing was cut in the recent federal cuts, but it might be worth talking to them about potential grants. And then I don't know if you're aware that the State Department also will give $1,000 per traveler to some of our nations that we're working hard on diplomacy with.
That would be incredible. We're also looking at a possible use of advanced opportunity grants, a scholarship through DECA, smaller scholarships through the Booster Club. And we're reaching out. I, I would particularly really like to finance a scholarship that would be, I don't know about earmarked, but preference given to a member of our RISE club at the school, both to expand that opportunity, but also just to have a broader representation of our Montana culture that's going to visit. So far, I don't think that's something that we could guarantee, but something that we're working on for sure. And those sound wonderful.
Can you please describe what RISE is to, so that others will understand what RISE is?
Yeah. RISE is our native student empowerment club, and it's run by Lee Malatere across the high schools. It's an incredible program. At Big Sky, they meet, is it every other week or once a week?
It's by understanding that they meet bimonthly, but I sure could be wrong. They meet every Wednesday afternoon, and they gather in our school library. And they Zoom with local, similar clubs around our state and their different Indian reservations. And really, it's just a neat organization.
We do share one member, and that student has already signed up for the trip. So we're really, really excited to see that, but.
All right. Any other questions? Trustee Walsh.
I just want to thank you for planning such a cool experience. This is always that kind of over, above and beyond type of thing that teachers do that make school so memorable. So thanks so much for making these cultural opportunities accessible to our kids.
Thank you, and you're welcome. And it's true, just lastly, the impact that these students will have on being able to experience such a unique opportunity. Again, the, the current multiple trips that happen through Education First are nothing but amazing likewise. This is a different type of trip where they just have that extra connection that just lifelong impact on the student experience.
Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
I assume none of the children, children, students speak Japanese. But have you talked to faculty at U M that teach Japanese?
We haven't yet. I think we started working on this trip about a month ago, but I think that's an incredible idea. We have another trip through EF that's going to Germany in the summer of 2027, planned. We haven't brought it to the board yet. I'm sorry. And we have been hosting, just because we got some interest from parents and community partners, like a German culture and language club on bimonthly, just this month kicked it off. But I think that the interest is definitely there. We have one student who's looking at signing up who's more or less fluent, and a parent who is also hoping to go, who is fluent. So I think that would add so much to the trip. So that's a, that's a wonderful idea.
Any final questions? CNN, thank you very, oh, thank you for your presentation, but I'll take a high school motion to approve the recommendation. Moved by Vice Chair Walker Andrews, second by trustee Davies. Any final trustee comments? CNN, any public comment? CNN, all of those in favor for approving the recommendation? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Travel safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is to approve the personnel report, and there'll be a elementary and a high school motion. And I'll go ahead and turn it over to HR Director, Mr. Lebowski.
Thank you. It's a fairly long one, but standard for this time of the year.
All right. Is there elementary motion to approve the elementary personnel report? Moved by trustee Witt, second by trustee Hayes. Any final trustee comments? CNN, any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, all elementary trustees in favor for approving the recommendation? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Is there a high school motion to approve the high school personnel report? Moved by trustee McShane, second by trustee Wake. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment? All trustees in favor for approving the recommendation? Please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Thank you for that. Next up is to approve the salary increase for on-call security, and this is over to Director of Facilities and Operations, Mr. McWilliams.
Thank you. So we currently have one full-time security position that works Monday through Thursdays. And this on-call position is kind of the unsung heroes, so to speak, that a lot of staff don't even realize the district has. So they cover everything after this person leaves in their Monday through Thursday role, including weekends, nights, holidays, you name it. So if something happens in the middle of the night, they respond. And that is every night. And so something happens every night. And I say it like that because they are very busy. And they typically, sometimes we're a little late in the game, you know, around pay around our employees. So they kind of get, not forgotten, but they're, as you see this, the spreadsheet there, it's a little difficult around how they're paid. They're, they have an hourly rate, so every time they respond to a phone call, they're going to get that $16 an hour. But they also get this differential just to be on-call, to kind of be on standby. And those rates are all different based on the day of the week and the holiday. We wanted to kind of clean that all up and, and make it a little bit easier for, one, payroll and for, and for our employees. And so we did a little bit of a study, looked at the hours worked based off of their annual income over a two-year period. Their average income is about $22.70 an hour. And so we're looking at kind of right in, right in the same ballpark as how we do with our classified staff and proposing the $24 an hour and that, with that $1.30 increase-ish.
Any questions from a trustee? Trustee Hayes.
How many hours total per year are we using the on-call security people?
They average about 40. They average about 40 hours a week.
Okay.
So that's right around 2,080, right? Or, yeah.
Any other trustees? Trustee Davy?
Am I understanding correctly that this would get rid of those differentials and just be flat?
Yeah, thanks. I didn't explain that very well. And I'll actually kind of go back with the, with the 40 hours a week. When you break down their pay, it's not 40 hours of response time, but it's 40 hours of response time and differential pay. It's kind of how you, we, if you look at the whole pay structure and you break it down in an hourly rate, it comes down to 40 hours at 2270. And so, but yeah, this differential would all go away. It would go on one, just one hourly rate.
Any other trustee questions? CNN, this is a full board motion. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by trustee Witt. Second by trustee Hayes. Any final trustee comments? CNN, any public comment? CNN, all trustees in, all trustees, I can't talk right now. All those who approve the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Sorry, our last three meetings were like 20 minutes with no audience. So I'm a little camera shy right now. So next up is Information Only and it's for Bridge Health Alliance presentation. And I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Lebowski.
Yeah, thank you. John Doran and his team have been traveling the state at a rapid pace to explain the Bridge Health Alliance, which I don't want to really steal any of your thunder. And I'm sure you can say it in your sleep at this point. So I'll just turn it over to John and team to let you know about our proposed statewide trust and how that might impact Missoula County Public Schools.
You could probably recite a lot of our presentation as well. You've heard it a few times. Madam Chair, members of the Board of Trustees, thanks so much for having us tonight. My name is John Doran with Bridge Health Alliance. By a very brief way of introduction, I spent 12 years as the Vice President and Chief of Staff of one of the state's largest health insurance companies. I'm the son of a 30-year high school teacher. My wife is a sixth grade social studies teacher at Helena Middle School, but I also have very deep roots in Missoula. My wife is a proud Hellgate Knight grad. I proposed to her 25 years ago, actually, we've been married for 25 years, on the Jumbotron at Washington Grizzly Stadium, and we were married up at Marshall Mountain. So a lot of great roots here. When I did work for the Missoulian under Sherry Devlin, that's when our son Finley was born here in Missoula as well. So it feels a lot like coming home. It's great to be here tonight and I'm going to let my team introduce themselves as well.
Hi there, I'm Judd Wagner, a consultant with USI. Super happy to be here. I do live in Denver now, but I'm a proud product of the Montana education system. It's not too often where you get to use your knowledge of insurance to give back to schools. So just thank you for letting us be here.
And I'm Jaclyn Gomes. I'm also a consultant for the Bridge Health Alliance. I'm out of Helena. I've worked with schools and health plans for a number of years and I'm just thrilled to be able to be a part of the team trying to bring something new and different to support our, our teachers and the staff. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for having us tonight. I know you have a very large agenda after us, so we want to be mindful of your time, but we also want to thoroughly explore this very unique opportunity that Missoula and all schools across the state have it for you. So just real briefly, here's our agenda and I'll jump right into it. So Micah, if you could advance to the next slide. I think it's important to know how we got here. And I don't want to spend a whole lot of time looking backwards, but I want everyone to understand why we are here and how we are here. So next slide, Micah. In, in 2023, after about 20 years of effort on behalf of the education community, the legislature passed House Bill 332. And this really is the catalyst for our effort being here. House Bill 332, which is now statute, signed by the governor, very bipartisan bill, passed the legislature with flying colors. It essentially sets the parameters for a brand-new school trust to benefit schools of all sizes across the state. I won't bore you with all of the particulars, but there are certain elements that are important to discuss tonight. The first is how we validate the trust. In order to validate the trust, we have to have signed commitments from at least 150 school districts covering at least 12,000 employees across the state. And those are 12,000 employees covered under health insurance, not just the total number of employees in a district. It sets some very strict limits on administrative expenses. I'm glad to tell you that we'll be about half of that, we'll be well underneath the cap of 12% administrative costs. I think every school district in the state is forced to operate in a tight budget, so why should we be any different? And then, and then it also provides some parameters for participation. So there is a five-year commitment period that was built into the law. The impetus for that was really to build some stability in the trust in those first five years. And if the trust can be stable, then our pricing to all of our schools can be stable. I will say though, there is a, what I affectionately call an exit valve built into the law, that if after year three, schools have a renewal that is higher than it should be and it's a very low threshold, then you can leave the trust at that time. Next slide, please. So it's important as well, excuse me, to note who we are. And Bridge Health Alliance is really, again, the culmination of about 20 years of effort. We are the only organization that is working to validate this new trust on behalf of public education. We're comprised of all education partners across the state. The entire alphabet soup is behind us, if you will. We're working in conjunction with all schools. Judd and Jaclyn and I have driven about 29,000 miles across the state since last March. We have visited with more than 300 school districts. And more importantly than telling school districts what we intend to do, we've been listening and really trying to incorporate feedback into how this structure looks and how it works for schools across the state moving forward. It's also important to note who we are not. We are not the Montana Unified School Trust. We are dramatically different in every way, shape and form from MUST. MUST has had its heart in the right spot for more than 50 years, but we are different in every way, shape and form. First and foremost, we have a two-tiered structure, which again is incorporated on behalf of listening to schools of all sizes. We have two tiers that work for small schools, large schools and everybody in between. And I mentioned that we do have the support of the alphabet soup, but we are not beholden to any one of those organizations. We will not be funneling money to any of them, which is the current MUST structure. All of our money stays with schools and stays in Montana. And furthermore, our Board of Directors will be solely representative of participating school districts and elected by participating school districts. So again, a very stark difference there. Next slide, Micah. I could probably talk for hours, but I won't bore you on the total value of Bridge. We're going to get into a lot of that today, but if you boil it down to three goals, these are our specific goals. Number one, we want to improve the health outcomes for all of your employees and loved ones and all of those colleagues across the state. If any organization in health insurance or healthcare doesn't list this as number one, I think maybe their hearts are in the wrong place. We also want to be able to redirect resources to schools and along those same lines, return savings to employees' pockets where it belongs. The one thing I'll tell you about Bridge Health Alliance, we have a lot of great ideas. We're bringing some very new concepts to the state of Montana. By joining schools together in solidarity, we are opening up some new strategies that simply don't exist for school districts on their own. But what we are also able to do is bring everybody together in a way, shape and form that benefits all schools. So I want to briefly address the elephant in the room, and that is the $40 million incentive payment that the trust will earn once it validates. You're all familiar with the legislature and I know we passed the STARS Act last session, which was about $110 million. But prior to this opportunity, when was the last time legislature invested $40 million in public education? It's been a long, long time. This is a really unique opportunity to address the second biggest line item in any school district's health, in any school district's budget, and that's health insurance. And those costs are rising. This $40 million is intended to stabilize health insurance costs, not only now, but into the future. And the really big opportunity here that we all know is that we have a very short runway to land this plane, if you will. The legislature provided a two-year window to validate the trust. And if by some way, shape and form, Bridge is not successful in validating the trust, the $40 million goes back into the Long Range Building Fund and it'll be a bridge somewhere, not Bridge Health Alliance. And we're here to make sure that does not happen. We want to and we are going to capitalize on this historic investment in a way that benefits schools of all sizes. We're incredibly excited about our opportunity and we want to talk through a number of different ways of how that $40 million benefits Missoula and benefits schools all across the state. So the first big strategy that we're able to, to capitalize on is, is by bringing schools together of this size. So once we have 150 school districts covering at least 12,000 employees, that's a lot of bargaining power. And it's a lot more bargaining power than even a school district like Missoula that's done a wonderful job with its benefits over the years. With just over 1,100 employees on your health plan can actually negotiate. This negotiating power is very strong. And the first way that we're able to do this is by our provider contracting. One of the neat things about Bridge is we have the exact same third-party administrator that Missoula does, and it's right here in Missoula, Allegiance Benefit Plan Management. They've done a great job of building out a number of different strategies. But what we are doing essentially is tying our pricing, our, our provider reimbursement to a percent of Medicare. And so why Medicare? Well, number one, it's the most stable pricing platform in the country. And I know I'm talking a lot of inside baseball here, so certainly give some time for questions at the end of, of the evening. But it essentially ties pricing to Medicare. So in, in any hospital situation, just a brief economics lesson on hospitals, hospitals will set a charge. And in most insurance scenarios, the, the insurance companies compete for the biggest discount off that charge. And that's great, right? Because it allows your members to get a, a discount off the price. But what also happens is they have what's called a charge master. And that charge master is a tool that they can use to increase their prices at any point. And if you have a discount and that hospital raises its prices, your charges still go up. What the percent of Medicare model does is it ties it to a specific percent. In our instance, we're looking at between 2.2 and 2.3% of Medicare. Now that correlates to what most hospitals have now, about 300-plus percent of Medicare. And what it also does is if that hospital raises its charge, our charges do not increase. Our charges stay the same. And it's a really big benefit in terms of the cost that your services will, will, will cost, but also in terms of the stability. So actually, Madam Chair, if you'll permit, I do have a sheet I want to hand out, if that's okay. This is just a, a letter that is validating the approach of why the multiple of Medicare approach works. This is from Marilyn Bartlett, who resides now in Missoula. Marilyn was the architect of the State of Montana Employee Health Plan, utilizing this exact same strategy to essentially rescue that very large health plan from the point of deficit. As you'll see in Marilyn's letter, this is something that worked from taking the state of Montana from a projected $9 million deficit in their plan to $112 million reserves in the course of three years. So we know this model works. It's been done in Montana before and we are happy to bring Bridge together to allow schools to also participate in this manner. Next slide. So what you can see on this slide is essentially the multiple of Medicare strategy in action. This is data from Montana, where you can see on the left is an inpatient cost and on the right is an outpatient cost. The blue lines are the traditional commercial insurance. You can see a lot of variability, but you can also see the trend line of increasing. The green lines are a multiple of Medicare strategy, a lot less noise and a much lower trajectory. And the really unique thing with Medicare pricing is that the unit costs, so the cost of the services themselves, only go up by a maximum 3% every year. Now compare that with the average hospital and commercial market of about 8 to 15%. And you can really start to see how over time, this makes a ton of sense for schools across the state. Next slide. I also want to be incredibly transparent. This multiple of Medicare strategy with Allegiance, these contracts are in place with hospitals today. The state of Montana used this for approximately eight years. But we have, as Bridge, in, in partnership with Allegiance, are going out to hospitals and asking to participate on this network. And, and we've had great meetings so far with hospitals that have been very, very receptive to this, but we will need an addendum to participate on those contracts. And so what we've done, because I know that provides some uncertainty, what we are doing is we are essentially working with the hospitals to allow Bridge to participate, but we're also building into your cost proposal and that of every school district, a contingency plan. And that contingency plan is what we see up here on the slide. And it essentially says that participating status in the Allegiance direct network of hospital systems where most employees receive care, contributions may be adjusted if the network status for these hospitals changes. In the event the hospital system or systems are not in-network, Bridge would provide Missoula a revised proposal and participation agreement in order to be signed. So essentially what we are doing is we are giving ourselves time to continue fighting on your behalf and working with hospitals to allow this to happen, but at the same time, giving you an exit plan if that for some reason does not happen. Now, there's been some discussion across the state that maybe what we're trying to do is illegal. And I, I couldn't speak more strongly against this. This is inaccurate. We have worked with the Insurance Commissioner's Office and working in this fashion is the way that allows schools to have the confidence to allow us time to keep working with hospitals, but at the same time provides you an opportunity before the plan ever starts to say, this didn't happen, this isn't working for us, and we need to sign or not sign a new participation agreement. Now, there are a lot of things that are transpiring in the market. As you can imagine, we've been traveling around the state, talking to a lot of people. I would just caution you to say that if, if you haven't heard it from Bridge, don't assume it to be true. And we are an open book and we are happy to answer any questions on any topic about why this makes so much sense for Montana. So we'll continue with the presentation and then we'll certainly provide a lot of time for questions at the end. And I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Judd.
All right. I forgot to mention this before because I didn't want to get booed off the stage, but I'm actually a former underwriter. So I used to be the evil numbers geek that raised your insurance rates. I apologize. Now we need, now we use my power of numbers for good. So one of the key questions that, you know, most schools have asked is, well, how, how does the 40 million benefit me? And keep in mind, you have schools with 10 employees, you have schools with 1,100 employees. We have groups that are self-funded like yourselves and folks that are fully insured. So I'll speak specifically to you guys. Now, even though you're self-funded, you do purchase a certain type of insurance called stop-loss. Stop-loss works in two different ways. It is protection against any one person having a large claim over a certain threshold. In your case, that's $250,000. It also works in, in the case that you guys have a really bad year overall. And so you guys are capped at 125% over expected costs. So those are the two specific insurances that you purchase even though you are still self-funded. So this model here shows you in a dollar, these are stop-loss dollars, premiums, how much is there for claims? And then that orange line, that's profit. So insurance carriers make profit on your school every single year. Now, if you go to the next slide, looks pretty much the same. However, the profit or any overages on premium would actually go into the bridge reserves. So our reserves are designed, are designed to make sure that the trust stays healthy. In bad years, we can dip into those reserves to keep costs down for schools. And in good years, we build up the reserves. Specifically to the House bill, they have dictated that an actuary will set a level where the reserves have to be. So we get 40 million right out of the gate and let's just, for argument's sake, say that number is 60 million where the actuary thinks it needs to be. Over the course of time, we'll slowly grow those reserves. But at the point we hit that maximum amount, also built into the law, is if we go over that amount 10 years down the road, we actually have to pay back this money. That would go completely against what the bill is about because we don't want to pay back $40 million because that money would have come on the backs of schools. So our goal is to very, make, make sure we have a very healthy reserve. But if we get close to that number, guess what happens? All those dollars go back to schools, whether that's premium holidays, whether that's wellness programs, any number of things. But we're not an insurance company. So we're here to get the trust to a safe level. And if any more dollars come in that are go above that, they go back to schools. Have you ever had an insurance company that said, hey, guys, we'll give you your money back if you spent too much? I worked at one, but don't say that. So if you go to the next slide, and in essence, I believe that your stop-loss carrier is Highmark. So what you're really doing in a year, they have what's called a target loss ratio. That means for every $100 you send them, they expect to pay out $70 in claims and $30 stays in their pocket. And so you're literally sending money, money from Montana schools to an entirely different state and it will never benefit schools again. If you go to the next slide, this is a study, it was done on, not on you guys specifically, but another large double A school. And as you can see, year in and year out, and I don't, I know it's a lot of numbers up. And as you can see, year in and year out, and I know it's a lot of numbers up there, so I'll simplify. Premium is on the far left. So, this school, over the course of the last six years, spent $7.7 million in premium. The value they got out of that would be the claims reimbursements. That was $4.6 million. So, what was left behind to the stop-loss carrier was $3 million over the course of six years. That's giving someone 500K a year. And what we're doing is we're taking a portion of the risk. So, in your case, it would be from claims that go over $250,000 to 600K. And those are the dollars that we take the risk on and that we would reimburse. And in doing that, we're kind of cutting the carrier out and eliminating their profits. And any dollars that go to us remain with BRIDGE Health and remain with schools. So, that's the biggest difference that you would see from an insurance perspective with us versus your current situation. Next slide. So, next up is pharmacy, and I don't know if you, any benefits geeks in the room, but there's been a lot of news about pharmacy lately. I will tell you, it is one of the dirtiest aspects of health insurance. We did a large RFP to make sure that we selected a very transparent pharmacy benefit manager, and who we ended up with was Capital RX. But specifically, we stayed away from the big three. You guys will probably get to know them this year, because their CEOs will be testifying in front of Congress. The reason that we like Capital RX is because, A, it's a very transparent model, but B, it keeps costs down. So, we did what's called a claims repricing. We took a group of schools representing about 2,400 employees. We turned over their claims data to several PBMs, and we had them reprice the claims. What would the cost have been if it was with you guys? And oddly enough, this group had Navitas, which is the same pharmacy benefit manager you have. And this group of schools actually would have saved 24% or $859,000 by being with our pharmacy benefit manager. Furthermore, we actually did a repricing of your claims. And you guys have done a great job, by the way. I have data on darn near every single school. Your costs, as far as big schools, is the lowest. So, we want to help you improve upon that with things that you can't do on your own. But in essence, when we repriced your claims, it would have been $300,000 less with us. So... And then, that's the data on the repricing. I'm not going to run through the numbers. I know you guys have a very busy night today, but that's just to show you the dollars spent and the dollars saved. John?
So, as Judd mentioned, the whole notion of BRIDGE Health Alliance is to be a pro-education, anti-corporate model. We're not here to send tens of millions of dollars to other states. We're here to keep it in schools in Montana in a way that benefits all of you. You've done a wonderful job managing your health plan over time, and we're here to provide some new opportunities that simply don't exist in a way that is a win-win for you and for all schools. I know your first priority is Missoula. Our priority is to make sure it works for Missoula, but also to make sure it works for other schools across the state as well. So, as we go to your cost proposal, and we've presented this to your health insurance committee as well, and walked through this a number of times with them, but what it boils down to is that the opportunity with BRIDGE Health Alliance is a cost savings in year one of more than $760,000 to Missoula. Now, that's not just a one-year benefit. Again, when you tie your pricing to the most stable platform on the planet, what we have here is a game-changing opportunity for schools. And I want you to think also about all of your surrounding schools, the little schools that wouldn't have the opportunity to even contemplate this type of idea. By bringing schools together in solidarity, BRIDGE Health Alliance is essentially opening up new opportunities and keeping all of those dollars here for one sole purpose, and that sole purpose is public education. There's never been another opportunity like this, and the more we travel around the State of Montana, the more we know that the time is now. Schools need this opportunity, and we are here to help work with you to make sure that it works for you as well. So, in summary, we feel like there are some substantial improvements that can be made and some substantial opportunities that exist. Again, we bring some collective bargaining power. We can negotiate with the size of numbers for all of the insurance products, not just the provider network. Think of life insurance, dental, all those ancillary products that you currently offer your employees. We're putting the provider pricing in your control, not in the control of the hospitals. We're pooling together with schools in a way that only benefits schools, and we're giving you the opportunity to build your own reserves and allow your district to benefit your employees with those reserves. This is an incredible opportunity for Montana. We are incredibly excited for this opportunity, and we look forward to any questions you might have. We sincerely appreciate your time tonight, and we look forward to serving you in the future.
Thank you very much. Now, open the floor for any trustee questions. Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
Okay. I don't want to put you back at the drawing board, but why are we doing it separately for schools instead of just jumping into the State of Montana Employee Health Plan?
Thank you for that question. So, there's a number of reasons why we wouldn't just have schools join the State of Montana Employee Health Plan. Number one, the State of Montana has one employer, and it sets its own rates. And in fact, the State of Montana contributes about $15,000 per person per year to its employee health plan. There's not a lot of small schools especially that could afford to do that. So, that's one really big piece, and that was one driving factor of why BRIDGE created this two-tier structure, because we knew that the way a small school district pays for health insurance is much different than the way a large school district pays for health insurance. And in fact, a small school district could not afford to be self-funded, like a district like Missoula. And a district like Missoula wouldn't want to operate in a fully insured plan and not take advantage of those strategies. So, from day one, we knew, and the legislature knew, that jumping on the State of Montana Health Plan probably wouldn't work for all schools.
Trustee Walsh.
Well, this sounds like a great plan for small districts. We kind of have a really good thing going. Could you do it without us?
Excellent question. Thank you, Trustee Walsh. So, we have to reach the validation thresholds of 12,000. And I agree, you've done a great job. But by bringing BRIDGE together with 150 school districts covering 12,000 employees, for example, the multiple of Medicare is not an opportunity that Missoula could do on its own. And you've done a great job all around the fringes, and you have a great contract with your local hospitals through Allegiance, but this opportunity would not exist without BRIDGE Health Alliance. We do need Missoula's participation. We feel like we have visited with every school across the state, large and small, and this benefits big schools as well. So, I want you to think beyond just the immediate of, "We've done a great job. We can continue doing a great job." At a certain point, healthcare is changing, and every school district across the state, no matter how well you've managed your health plan, is going to have to change at some point. And this is the best opportunity at this moment for you to get the best of both worlds, size, scale, negotiating power, but maintaining all of your local autonomy. So, the only things... So, Missoula will continue to define its own benefit structure, define its own contribution rates, define its own formulary for prescription drugs. All of those decisions stay with you, so you get that local autonomy, but the opportunity to join something that's much bigger and bigger than just any one district.
Yep. You can have a follow-up then. Trustee Davy.
Getting to the providers, have you negotiated rates already with our local providers?
So, the Allegiance contract is in place with both local providers, and it's at a specific percent of Medicare. So, we are going to those providers now, talking with those providers about the BRIDGE opportunity, the fact that we're going to bring a very similar-sized pool as the State of Montana Employee Health Plan, and knowing the fact that other public sectors, like cities, municipalities, are already participating on this as well, those conversations are going well. And so, the contracted rates that the State of Montana had in place are our starting point. Now, we've built in a lot of conservatism into our pricing. So, let's just say, for example, that a hospital is at 225% of Medicare. And if we know what our advantage is in comparison to the current commercial contract, we haven't taken it all the way down to that red threshold. We've built in a lot of conservatism, just in case that hospital says, "Well, we were at 225 now, but we need 230." We've already accounted for that. And so, we know exactly where the State of Montana was. That's our starting point, and we're going to be working with hospitals to bring them in at an affordable rate.
And I would just add one thing. You know, sometimes the way this presentation comes out, it's like us versus the hospitals, and it really isn't that. We see the hospitals as partners. That's why we built that level of conservatism in. You know, the doctors are our neighbors. And so, you know, hospital economics in Montana has gotten a little goofy. If you look at, you know, a well-run hospital, they will lose money serving Medicaid patients. They'll make a little bit of profit on Medicare, but the vast majority of their margins come from commercial health payers or employee-sponsored healthcare, like you guys. And so, we're not trying to cut them out completely. We're trying to reach a fair level, because at our size, the negotiating power, you know, 300% is the average. So, that means if I'm a Medicare patient and I break my leg, that's $10,000. If I'm one of your employees and I break my leg, that's $30,000. And so, we're just seeking a level that's more consistent. But I think the biggest value to you guys, and to kind of go back to your other question, was you guys are doing a fantastic job. I've got the numbers in front of me. But in doing a fantastic job, you're still seeing rate increases year over year of, you know, 7% to 10%. Medicare, the most that the unit cost can go up in a given year is 3%. Sometimes it doesn't go up at all. So, the one thing that we can help that you guys couldn't do, even though you've done great, is, you know, keep that unit cost down. So, I think there's other schools that will need more help than you guys will, but I still think there's a lot of benefit. Yeah.
I have one more follow-up on this chain of thought. So, help me understand, you know, St. Pat's is trying to squeeze the value of every penny as hard as they can right now. It's hard to be a hospital. I just, I guess I don't understand, their pool from Missoula really wouldn't be changing. So, how, what's their motivation to lower, to bring us lower rates?
So, I think when we say strength in numbers, we're not really telling the full story. So, you guys are the largest school system around, but think about how many others that are served by those two hospitals. I mean, you have folks that come from all over the state to get care in Missoula, because it's some of the best care in the state. But when we start talking about 12,000, I mean, that's 12 times what you guys are in size. The other thing is, when you have a two-hospital town, they compete with each other. And so, we use that. And not saying we do anything heinous, but we, when you have two places to go, the concern is, "Oh, my gosh, you know, the trust is going to send them to the other hospital. We better sign this deal." At the end of the day, I think, you know, we are in a position to do something that no other school can. And that really gets down to getting these folks to agree to a Medicare contract. And even if they kept the same exact rates they're at today, we slow the bleeding of the 7% to 10% increases year in and year out.
The one last thing I would say, when we talk about these partnerships with a hospital, you have to take into consideration that we are going to them discussing this only to benefit our schools. This is not something that some of the larger entities or private companies, we would be going and talking to them about. And really, if you take a look at schools, you guys are a very unique model in that you can't produce new widgets. You can't generate new revenue to combat the rising cost of healthcare. So, I think there's a lot, to your point of, why would they want to do this in a broad sense? But then, when you bring schools into the discussion, I think that is a much different dynamic that benefits the schools, but also, you guys have talked, we heard, the partnerships that you guys are already talking about, how your students feed into your communities. So, I would say, yes, it is an important conversation. Schools are very, very different than any other market when we're sitting down and having these conversations with hospitals.
Thanks for being here tonight, putting together a presentation. I helped develop the Patient Protection Affordable Care Act and was appointed by President Obama to help implement it in the State of Montana. So, I do remember when those letters went out from Blue Cross Blue Shield. So, I have a little bit of a question about what's changed for you in your life from when you argued against insulin caps and tried to blame your disorganization as an insurance company on making patient care better. And so, I'm curious how your perspective has changed over time. You did come back and advocate for being good about getting people into CHIP and Medicaid. So, I've seen some growth, but I'd like to hear about that.
Thank you for that question. I've always, in both my personal and professional capacity, argued for better public policy. And at the same time, I was an agent of a very large insurance company, and I was paid to do what they had told me to. I would also say that I was one of the frontline advocates for mental health across the state, and I've probably done more in that capacity professionally than in anything else I've ever done. My heart has always been in the right place. As you remember in that session, I was a fierce advocate for one particular position that my company held. I'm now a fierce advocate for this opportunity. So, you know, I personally want this to happen for public schools. My heart is in public schools. And to be held accountable for a position that my employer had, I don't know that that's necessarily fair, but I will tell you this, I have always advocated for better health of Montanans, and I will never stop doing that. And that's what I feel I'm doing now, bringing my heart, bringing my professional experience to the table in a way that can benefit all public employees in Montana.
Great. Thank you. You've talked a lot about the Medicare matching or using the percentages. I believe that's what's known as reference-based pricing. And so, Allegiance came up with this reference-based pricing, and the State Employee Plan was able to save $48 million. And then, you argued for the State Employee Plan to leave Allegiance and go to Blue Cross Blue Shield, because you thought you could get the Medicare rate from 245% to 195% or times, right? I'm wondering if that has actually successfully happened that you know of. And also, I think, why would we switch to your new reference-based plan when we already have reference-based pricing as a self-funded plan through Allegiance? So, we're not getting a new one, you know, but what are those actual rates? Because right now, there's no proof of cost savings for the health employee plan. It's been out for 18 to 24 months, and so, the state employees are not saving money. And even if you have personally advocated for mental health care, out-of-state mental health care clinics are no longer in-network with the university, and they were prior if they were with whatever company. So, you know, I personally don't see the advantage. I'm wondering what that would be.
And so, let me just ask for a little clarity in your question. So, you're not seeing the value in what the state is doing now, or you're not seeing the value in the reference-based pricing slash multiple of Medicare strategy?
No. Multiple Medicare reference-based pricing is great. That's one of the reasons our self-funded plan is doing so well with Allegiance, or Allegiant. But the state-funded plan switched from being basically in the type of plan we're in right now to a different plan that you argued for, promising all of these savings. I think you promised about $47.8 million in savings, and none of that has been realized yet, and actually, rates have gone up for the employees.
Yeah. So, great question. So, once again, advocating on behalf of my former employer, which I was very good at doing, the state, for the first time, has seen premium increases for their employees since 2016, and it's the first time they've moved away from this specific strategy. What Blue Cross was contending at the time, and maybe still does, is that they could reach a blended multiple of Medicare rate of 195%. So, that's the hospital inpatient outpatient, but also the professional, which typically hovers around, you know, 135 to 150 in that range. They're not meeting those marks. So, you know, you can say that, you know, the current TPA for the State of Montana had one idea, and it's not necessarily working right now. And you can see that in a lot of different fashions, and I think that just lends credibility to why this approach is so much better.
I would also add that you guys currently are not on a multiple of Medicare contract. So, you guys have direct contracts with the two hospitals here, so it's a specific number that would be not tied to Medicare, but just less than what they do for normal commercial networks. So, that's why you guys are doing better, but it is not currently based on a multiple of Medicare.
I am not confident that that's true, based on how Allegiance talks about the self-funded plans, and it was, you know, their innovation, right? Your current employer innovated how to do that. I mean, not yours. You're a consultant, right? But I mean, that's who's paying you right now. And I guess I'm saying, we already have some of that benefit. I'm curious what rate you think you can negotiate for us, right? If we already are benefiting from Allegiant negotiating 245%, what is your rate target?
It actually varies hospital to hospital, but it's based on the state. The State of Montana was 230 inpatient. The state of Montana was 230 inpatient, 250 outpatient statewide. But you definitely have some drastic differences between hospitals. So, it would be in that range. But just to be clear, Allegiance has two networks. There's the one that's the commercial one, the PPO, that you guys have, and then they have what they call an Allegiance Direct Network. There is literally one, no, two groups that are still on it. So, we've worked with Allegiance very closely. We did a 258-page RFP regarding, you know, this specific thing, because this is a big deal. And so, we know without a doubt that there's two associations that are based on cities and counties that are on that contract, no one else.
Okay, PPO is very different than a self-funded plan.
PPO refers to, so self-funded is more of your funding arrangement, and a PPO is a network, so Preferred Provider Organization. They're not, they're completely independent of each other. So, you could be self-funded and have a PPO, an HMO, and all the other acronyms out there, but your network is a PPO network. It is not a multiple Medicare network.
Okay, so, speaking of our providers, we've been able to negotiate a $0 co-pay for some telehealth for our employees and a $20 co-pay for in-person healthcare. Would we be able to keep that?
Absolutely. That's the biggest, the biggest question that really well-run self-funded plans have is what changes and what can I keep? So, there's three specific things that the bill kind of makes us do. So, number one is selection of the TPA. You'd have no choice, but granted, you guys are with Allegiance, we picked Allegiance. The stop-loss carrier. I can tell you, most folks don't even know who their stop-loss carrier is. You want to be with someone who's reputable and has money to pay large claims. And then, lastly, the PBM, Pharmacy Benefit Manager. Ours is different than yours, but I think what you will find is capital because of their model. A, like you'd be one of two schools that could even work with them, because they only work with employers of 1,000 or more, but B, the transparency. So, part of the reason we selected them is they use what's called NADAC pricing, and that's the National Average Drug Acquisition Cost. So, there's no phony baloney with the Pharmacy Benefit Manager putting different drugs on different formularies because they get a bigger kickback. There's an admin fee that we pay, and there's a dispensing fee that goes to the pharmacist. But why that's so important in Montana, because of our ruralness, is most of us don't realize that a pharmacist at a mom-and-pop pharmacy loses money on 40% of the drugs they prescribe and make money on 60%. They love this model because they're guaranteed to get a dispensing fee for every drug they provide.
And further, just to add a little bit on that, for the tier-one schools, so for the schools that do not get to select their own benefit plans, we actually have a $5 co-pay for all mental health in-person visits and a $0 co-pay for our behavioral health telehealth as well.
Trustee Davey, can we have Vice Chair Walker Andrews? And then, we can go back to you, because I know you have a few more.
Mine is actually very simple. You mentioned before that, quote, "schools are unique," and I was wondering about actually the healthcare costs of schools compared to other kinds of businesses.
Yeah, so, I would say, when we talk about this in Underwriter Geek Speak, we're talking about the SIC code. And I would say, schools in general, schools, cities, government employees tend to be slightly riskier. And the reason being is because, once you join a school, you're a school employee for good. You go outside of schools and government, you know, the average time a person is at an employer is about four years, lots of job hopping. And so, unique in the fact that you have so many different things you need to consider. So, you have the 22-year-old fresh out of college and, you know, probably has minimal need for health insurance. Next stage of life is childbearing age, and yes, and I'm getting there. So, when you hit 40... But realistically, then you have retirees and early retirees. And so, you know, it is just a different model. That's why we like to see you guys have at least three or four plans, so you have something to offer everyone at every stage. I do think, you know, getting back to the telemedicine thing, you guys have a fantastic telemedicine situation, but what I'm always shocked at is how few schools actually use telemedicine. So, we will have a vendor that we've negotiated with that has three forms of telemedicine. It is urgent care, kind of like teledoch, like what most of us are used to. But they also have a primary care component, which we feel is extremely important. And then, lastly, they have a mental health component. You know, what we see, not only in schools, but across the state of Montana, I think we're number two or number one in suicides. And so, as John had mentioned before, $5 copays into our tier-one plans, because we get to dictate their plans. We wouldn't do that to you. But the point is, you know, we want to make access important, because if our educators can't be well, how can our kids be well? So, I think, sorry, I hope that answered your question.
Trustee Walsh and Trustee Davey, for the remaining of your questions.
As you can see, we are not bored by the details.
No, love it.
This group will get right into the weeds with you.
Yes.
And part of that is because I think, you know, I'm especially feeling protective of our staff. It's, I keep hearing healthcare spoken of as the last perk standing, right? It's hard to be an educator these days, and one of the perks is having great healthcare. So, of course, we are hesitant to do anything to make that not as great as it is. But statewide, you know, Missoula is really healthy, and we actually have a pretty young population. Statewide, we have an aging population in education. So, let's, I want to talk about some of the worst-case scenarios. Let's say we have a bad year and the reserves dry up. At that point, does Missoula then have to kick in funding?
No, so, yes and no. I'll give you, so, a couple of different things. Number one is, there are two different sets of reserves. All tier-two schools, so like Missoula, bring your own reserves, and those are yours, you keep them. The bridge reserves are really there specifically for reinsurance or stop loss. Now, we get the question a lot, was $40 million enough? And, you know, I can't tell you how many people that are not actuaries have told me that's not enough. Well, but if you think about it, if your tier-two schools, and that's at least 6,000, maybe 7,000 total employees, all bring their own reserves. So, it's not like all the reserves that people think are necessary. It changes because of you guys bringing your own. We've also ran models. Keep in mind, we have our own actuary, who's been working with the state's actuary. We have had the insurance commissioner involved every step of the way. But we have run worst-case scenario models where, literally, for the first three years, we hit the attachment point. That means we were 25% off. And that happens to 1% to 2% of self-funded groups in the entire country per year. We did it three years in a row, and we would still have money left in reserves, which then feeds into that exit valve. So, the exit valve in year three, you guys can actually, after year three, you could exit bridged health. Everyone thinks it's five years, it is, but there's a three-year exit valve. So, we are held to a standard that is based on medical CPI. Medical CPI is an unfair standard, in my opinion, because it includes things like cotton swabs and Q-tips, et cetera. Right now, it's currently at 3%. And so, if we go 50% above that, which means 4.5%, then schools can choose to leave. Now, I would contend, if we're keeping trends down to 4.5%, why would you leave? But, you know, so there is that valve there. But because we've run three years of worst-case scenario, furthermore, a group our size would never purchase aggregate reinsurance, because the law of large numbers, the bigger you are, the easier it is to forecast your costs. We are purchasing aggregate reinsurance because we're being ultra-conservative, and we're doing it for at least the first three years. Lastly, we purchased stop-loss on the entire trust at $600,000. To be honest, as an underwriter, that number should be closer to a million. But because we want to be conservative and get this thing off on the right foot, we've added conservative across the entire board.
Who is going to choose the out-of-pocket max, the deductibles, and the coinsurance?
You guys.
Missoula County Public Schools.
You pick everything today that you do today, literally everything, minus three. Stop-loss carrier, PBM, TPA. Keep in mind, our TPA is the same as yours.
So, our stop-loss, we've only hit twice this year, and we've had incredible stop-loss management. And so, we've been able to negotiate our rate down to $115,000 a year, so we're not near that $500,000. Ours is already substantially lower than that.
Are you talking premiums?
Yes.
So, these premiums that, our premiums are actually lower than yours, and yours are based on current, we're comparing to the future. So, our rates are lower than yours, and if you haven't hit, if you've only had two people hit the stop-loss, where's that excess money going?
Into our reserve.
No.
No.
No, it's insurance. So, if I'm provided, like, I'll be the big bad reinsurer.
No, because if we're paying $115,000 a year and somebody goes over $250,000 in costs through chemotherapy, that's going to cost more than $115,000.
No, so, you guys are paying about eight, I'll call it seven or 800,000 a year in your premiums?
I just looked it up and confirmed it.
Okay.
It's $9,600 a month.
It might be for the aggregate reinsurance, which...
No, the aggregate was lower.
So, we, I mean, we have your stop-loss contract, and that's where we pulled our...
It's 3,400 aggregate.
Okay, aggregate, yeah. So, I'm going to pull up your actual numbers.
And those are our actual numbers.
No, but aggregate reinsurance, so typically, I think you guys pay about $1.60 PEPM, and that's, that is the cheapest insurance you have. And so, the reason aggregate reinsurance is so inexpensive is kind of the example I just gave, where only 1% to 2% of groups across the entire country will hit their aggregate. That's why it's inexpensive. Your specific stop-loss, which is for claims that go over 250K, is... Sorry, I've got too many spreadsheets up here. The premium that you guys pay on a per-person basis currently is $86.92. And I did lie, your aggregate stop-loss is $3.02. So, our quote was about a dollar less PEPM for the specific, so not dramatic, but on average, reinsurance goes up by 10% a year. So, we're comparing against your current, and we're projecting for 2026. Ours is less. Now, to get back to your point about only so many people have hit it, so your premiums annually for aggregate and specific are $1.2 million. And so, if you're only having two people that hit your stop-loss, that's the only time you're getting money back from the reinsurer. So, as an example, I'll just use rough numbers, your specific is at 250. Let's say you had two $500,000 claims. That means you've got $250,000 for each claimant back from the reinsurer. That's a half million dollars. What you left on the table in that situation is over 600,000. And so, rather than leaving it with a reinsurance company, the advantage of bridged is it goes into the bridge reserves that are used to not only keep your costs down, but schools across the entire state. In your current situation, when you overpay for reinsurance, when you're healthy and have good years, that money goes to an insurance carrier in a different state. And that's one of the benefits of having bridged. We're taking that gap and returning it to schools.
So, the telehealth providers you're talking about, are they out-of-state or in-state? Because right now, they're in Missoula.
So, you can keep your own. Like, I, so, it's not a question of trying to replace anything you guys have today. Generally speaking, because you have to be licensed in the state, they're going to be in the state, but there are multi-state licenses, so I can't guarantee that in every case.
Yeah, okay. I have heard that dental will not be included.
Dental is not accounted for right now, and the reason being, it has nothing to do with validation. So, we're trying to get in front of 300 schools and have conversations like this. It's all for nothing if we don't validate. But we will have dental and vision, and it'll come in two forms. So, go back 10 years ago, you know, you could pretty much depend on a Delta Dental being like the cheapest way to go, a network product where they've negotiated discounts with a dentist. Depending on where you're at in the state, a lot of dentists are not participating in those anymore. So, we'll have two options. One would be a network option, and I'm not saying it'll be Delta, but some network. And then, the other one would be open access, meaning you can go to any dentist you want, and we'll reimburse them at 90% of usual customary. So, you'll have two choices, essentially, one with choice and one with a network that might be a little bit less expensive. You guys being self-funded, you can pick and choose however you'd like to do it. Same thing with vision. The last piece is ancillary. Now, we are not an ancillary carrier, but we're going to use our size to negotiate good deals on life insurance, disability, et cetera. Do you guys currently offer voluntary insurance? So, it's like the Aflac, so, quick soapbox, but what I hate about those insurance, I think it's great, because the average person in the state, in the country, probably has about $1,000 in their savings account. A lot of our employees are on high-deductible health plans, and if you break your leg or have something bad happen, you're in big trouble. So, the whole idea of a voluntary insurance carrier is, most employees can afford a small monthly premium for that what-if, you know, whether it's cancer insurance, critical illness, et cetera. But if the loss ratio for those carriers is 20%, what that means is, for every $100 your employees are paying, 20% goes towards claims and actually reimbursing them, 80% stays with the carrier. So, I don't know if we'll have it prepped for this year, but definitely by next year. We're going to have a claims crossover with Allegiance, where if I'm an employee and I break my leg, well, we know that that's a certain claim type, and Allegiance will send it to the voluntary carrier and start the claim. Most of our employees sign up once a year, they don't understand insurance very well, and they don't even remember what they have. So, we're trying to, you know, make insurance work for Montana schools differently than it does today.
Yeah, I like seeing the ancillary on there. That's what I have through the Electricians Union right now, like under one premium.
IBW?
Yep. Local 206.
Yes, yes.
But we have almost nobody on a high-deductible plan.
Yeah, no, you guys are unique, but high-deductible plans are very popular across the state.
Yeah, but we're talking about Missoula right now. And we have an obligation to over 100 retirees, and it is very unclear to me what happens to our current retirees, what kind of Medicare supplement there will be, and whether or not you're prepared to take on retirees as people retire.
So, great question. So, I think Montana statute is very clear about retirees being afforded the opportunity to continue participating, so Bridge will certainly abide by those rules. And then, it becomes ultimately the decision of each individual school district. And Judd can talk a little bit about the difference between early retirees and Medicare-eligible retirees, because that's kind of a different discussion, but Bridge is absolutely able to handle that.
Yeah, so, the early retirees to us, I mean, A, we're going to follow the law, but B, we're not trying to change anything that a school is doing today, and they're inherent in the claims experience, so we see that already. What I've seen across the state, a lot of schools are covering Medicare retirees. And I'm like, hey, that's great, guys, but man, you guys are charging a lot of money for that, and Medicare picks up the vast majority of the cost. I've seen Medicare rates where, you know, people are paying $800. And so, what we are offering is, and no one has to take us up on this, but if you have a situation or a school where you have all these folks, because they're comfortable with the plan they've always known, we have teams that will reach out and talk to them and say, hey, you know, you're paying 800 bucks a month, and realistically, you could be paying like 30. Whether they want to do it or not, totally up to them. But early retirees, that's more simple, because they're already there. They're already included.
Yeah, but they have to have a supplement plan in case something goes wrong. I mean, that's realistic.
I'm talking with supplement, like, I help my mom out with this every single year. There's no supplement on the planet that is $800 a year. An expensive supplement might be 200 or 300. So, our Medicare retirees, in a lot of cases, and the rates I've seen are paying way too much.
Yeah, but most of them are not 30 either.
No, it depends.
Sorry, I'm almost done here.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot of concern among our employees about being able to continue using the local compounding pharmacy instead of the pharmacy that you want to contract with. Can you address that?
So, pharmacy is not, we're talking Pharmacy Benefit Manager, so the pharmacies themselves are all, all of your pharmacies are in network, so that doesn't affect them at all.
Yeah, it does look like a lot of the costs for formularies go up, though.
Which formulary are you looking at?
Well, I mean, there's a lot of them, so I didn't memorize them.
Yeah, no, I'm saying there's, you guys have your choice of formulary, and so, Capital offers five different formularies. Furthermore, you know, we took your exact drug spend and ran it through ours, and it actually came up $300,000 less. That was the claim repricing.
Yeah, I know, but when we actually looked at it, that was really hard to see. And so, you know, like, I mean, I've looked at the spreadsheets, and I don't think we're confident that that's true.
Okay, we've done this for every AA, and, you know, there's, we're happy to work with your consultants, your team, and show you line by line how we repriced them. And if there's differences in methodology, we can change it like that to, you know, to appease, you know, differences in methodology, I guess.
Okay, and then, maybe you can help me understand, so the $40 million goes in, if there's an excess in that reserve in 2036 on July 1st, we have to pay back that excess as set by an actuary or set by state law. So, that 40 is there kind of as a buffer, right? That's for the stop-loss, that's the dip-in if we have some huge claims. And then, you said, we get to keep ours, but then, there's, you know, districts like Kalispell that have a negative 1.9 reserve, 1.9 million. And so, I'm having trouble understanding, like, if we basically get to keep doing what we're doing now, but there's going to be districts entering with negative amounts, it seems like we're taking on a lot of the risk of the other school districts.
So, I think, look at it this way. We're providing Missoula an opportunity to continue to build its reserves, and bigger reserves allow you a lot of flexibility in how you return that to the... bigger reserves allow you a lot of flexibility in how you return that to the employees. We're providing the same opportunity for Kalispell and every other double A district, for that matter. So, the immediate savings that Kalispell stands to see are savings that go right back into injecting into their reserves to help them build back to a healthier standpoint. From a stop-loss standpoint, right now, right, you're with a national company, your risk is blended with other industries, other employers, that you have no idea the, the health of those populations. With bridged, it's only with schools. It's only with public schools, and it all stays here. So, I would see it as an opportunity to continue building the reserves to wherever the level you see is healthy, and then, using everything below that to give back to the employees in any way, shape, and form you see.
And I would add, it would be their responsibility to, to pay their own claims, just like it would be yours. So, if a school ends up unable, financially unable to pay claims, that's between them and, and the providers that they owe money to. It would not be like, hey, Missoula, can we borrow, borrow from our reserves? They're, they're totally independent, just like two independent self-funded groups. They don't get to dip into the bridged reserves as a tier-two to pay for claims that they just couldn't afford.
So, I mean, it seems to me this is almost like a different kind of insurance product. And I'm failing to see, other than potentially some rate negotiation, any advantage for us, because we can already use our excess reserves to take down per-employee cost.
Yes, but I, I do think that the biggest difference, or, I'll summarize it into three. Your stop-loss, when you pay more than, than you get back in claims, it goes somewhere else. With us, it would, would potentially be used to save money for all schools. It stays in Montana, that's a benefit. We can go through the claims repricing on, on, on the pharmacy, but we, we applied the same methodology to every single school. You guys had a great contract, so you were saving less than, than others, but you're still saving three-hundred K when we repriced it. Happy to have a, a deeper dive, you know, on methodologies, but that, you can take to the bank. Lastly, you currently are in a situation where you are, or you're on a, a contract that is a discount off of charge. And even though yours is special, as in you've got a, a deeper discount off of charge, if hospitals choose to raise their rates, your, your costs go up too. With us, it's tied to Medicare, and so, the hospitals can change prices as much as they like, your rates are tied to Medicare. And so, that's gonna break the trend. Even though you guys have a lower trend than most other schools, your unit cost is not held down like ours is.
Yeah, I mean, our, our rate increases have been incredibly low. We went six years without a rate increase.
I, I'm aware.
Okay, and then, only went five-point-nine, which is a substantial jump, but then, we only did ten dollars per person this year, which is a very slim percent.
Trustee Davey, do you have any final questions?
The five dollars per member per month charge, I'm very unclear on what that is.
Five dollars per employee per month, and that is specific to bridged. So, we have a budget of two-point-five million dollars for the entire year. So, your portion of that is five dollars per employee per month. And, you know, Bridge is gonna have, I'll let John talk about bridged and, and the staffing model and other things, but, you know, we, we are gonna be an organization that has costs, and your, your contribution to that would be five per employee, not per member. Members, members would make it, make it higher.
Yeah, employee lives, not member lives?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And is that the only, like, profit that comes out of this model?
Yes, absolutely. Super transparent, we've, we've had this question a lot, because some, some trusts will, you know, take kickbacks on pharmacy rebates, they will, you know, build commission into stop-loss premiums, they'll do a lot of different things. We even have some schools that currently do that today with Allegiance, and Allegiance has commissions built in. We feel it just doesn't make sense for us, being a very transparent organization, so it's out there for everyone to see. It's five dollars P E P M for all tier-two schools, no difference in pricing. Likewise, our admin costs that we have from Allegiance are passed on to you guys, and there's another single tier-two school that has a different administrative quote from us than anyone else.
Yeah, we have zero profit motive whatsoever. I mean, we have to keep the lights on and, and do a good job of running this organization in a way that benefits schools, but we have zero profit margin. And that's why, you know, you can judge any of my former record, you know, as an agent of a health insurance company, but this record, judge me by this, that this is the anti-corporate model. Everything we are doing is to benefit schools, from our benefit design to structuring the way that we have that allows tier-two schools like Missoula County to take advantage of our size and scale and continue to have all of the local decision-making. We have zero profit motive in, in this model.
Then, why aren't we doing it without Allegiance?
You mean, not using a TPA?
Yeah.
We, we are not in the business of, of being a TPA. You know, Allegiance has been in place for years, it took them years to get to where they're at. You can't just start a TPA out of the blue and expect it to be as good as one that's already here.
Okay, but they will profit. I mean, they are now, but I'm just clarifying.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're a business, I mean, they, they get paid for their service, just like you guys pay them.
But, they also had the by-far lowest cost out of all the respondents to the RFP.
Trustee Walsh.
Me again. It's a quick one, though. You know, if I was just an employee watching from home, and I think there are, a lot of our employees are watching from home, because this will affect them, I would be thinking, with a two-point-five million-dollar budget, isn't this just adding middlemen? That would be my question if I had no background and I'm just watching this meeting, so how is this, how are we not just adding someone to skim off the top here?
Yeah, so, in no way are we doing that. What we're doing is we're, we're providing a vehicle for schools to continue with what they have, especially for Missoula County, with little to no disruption whatsoever, but saving costs in a way that only benefits those employees. So, this is a unique opportunity to capitalize on forty million dollars and provide a stable platform and a backstop like it's never existed for schools ever. And, and, and we have to have some organization to be able to do that. We're here for one pure purpose, and that is to benefit public schools.
Trustee Hayes.
Okay, I just have three questions. First of all, how many double A schools have already agreed to sign on?
So, we, we began offering cost proposals in September, and originally, we gave schools until November thirtieth to make those decisions. We've extended that deadline to no, December nineteenth. Much like this body, it will have to go through school boards of trustees. Those meetings are just starting to happen in November. In fact, we had three school board meetings last night and three commitments last night. So, as they work through those scenarios and they work through those procedures, we continue to have more and more commitments every single day. We have a number of verbal commitments from double As, but until I have a signed agreement, I'm not at liberty to say.
Okay, so, of those that you have agreements from, what is the average age of their employees?
You know what, that is a fantastic question, I could not give you a direct answer. I would say, as we look at all of them, I, you know, generally speaking, if you go employee, it's probably closer to forty-two, but we just haven't looked at it like that. So, we would commit to getting back to you, but I, I just don't have, I wouldn't be able to give you an honest answer.
And Trustee Hayes, can I ask where that question comes from? Is that relative to the risk in like a reinsurance pool? Do you know the average age of the rest of your reinsurance risk pool now?
I do not. I know the average age of teachers in the state of Montana, but I'm just curious as to what age of the pool that you have and how that will impact claims.
And, really quickly, I do think that's a very valid question. What I would highlight is that when we look at our tier-two schools and the proposals, those are really derived on your utilization, your age, your demographics. Yes, there is a middle layer between your specific and the six-hundred thousand that will be kind of a shared risk, but your proposals really are driven based off of your demographics. So, what you guys will experience from an overall impact based on another group's age is very limited, because, again, you're paying your own claims. Stop-loss will be driven based off of your, the vast majority of stop-loss will be based off of your personal utilization. And so, yes, there, there's, um, valid, it's valid to look at the overall average age, but it will have limited impact on what you guys are experiencing.
Okay. My last question is, you have for one-year goals, you're doing overall improvement of health. What does that entail? What are you thinking? And, I mean, to me, that would be a sales pitch.
No, I think there's a lot of different ways, and, and certainly, you've already tackled a lot of these. So, you know, we have looked to schools to see what some of the strategies are surrounding wellness, but let's just take, for example, incentivizing primary care. We know that primary care is one of the most effective ways of, of treating any healthcare ailment, and in any scenario, you have a spectrum or a continuum of health. And, low-risk people tend to move into high, you know, mid-risk, and mid-risk moves into high-risk, and high-risk moves into chronically ill. Those are all worse outcomes the farther you get on that spectrum, and also more costly. So, if we are able to identify ways that we can incentivize primary care, maybe it is waiving copays, maybe it is, you know, potential, you know, rewards to, to members, then we're able to improve the health outcomes of those people. In our benefit designs, and granted, you guys get to choose your own benefit designs, but in our benefit designs, we can look at musculoskeletal, we can look at maternity cases, we can look at cancer cases, we can look at mental wellness, which often has a lot of comorbid, comorbidities, sorry, couldn't get that one out. There are a lot of different ways that we can, that we can do this, and for a school district like Missoula that has already done a lot of this, maybe those don't seem as big and bright and shiny, but for schools that have never had the opportunity to even think about those things, we're providing that vehicle that then makes a entire statewide health pool that much healthier, which means it costs that much less.
All right, thank you very, very much. So, it looks like this will have to go on toward December sixteenth, our next school board meeting as an action item, which will be another round of an opportunity. Would you guys be back for that, or how would that work?
We certainly can be, absolutely.
Because I'm sure we'll have more questions. Trustee Davey will have more questions. So, that's what we'll do, we'll just add you on to our next school board meeting and make it an action item on whether or not we join our decline to offer. So, next up is public comment. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none. So, next up is item ten, which is to interview applicants for the school board vacancy. We are gonna take a five-minute transition break, and then, we'll be back here at eight oh five. Thank you.
I'm a woman.
All right, I will call everybody back. So, next up is item ten, which is to interview applicants for school board vacancy, which was held by Trustee Mercer. And so, we had eight applicants, one withdrew. And so, first up, we'll go ahead and interview Evan Rosenberg?
It's Rosenberg.
Rosenberg. And this is a public process, but each candidate will be interviewed individually. Just from seeing how our last interview went, we felt like this was a little bit easier for us to do. So, I'll, we will go ahead and start with the first question.
Okay, this question is very much like one that you wrote an answer to already, but you've had more time to think about it, and it is slightly different. So, the Board of Trustees is a collective body that relies on the skills and attributes of its members. With this in mind, please tell us why you want to be a member of the M C P S Board of Trustees, and what unique skills or attributes qualify you?
Thanks for the question. I'll start with the why first, and then, go to the skills and attributes next. The why, I care about young people as the issue I've always wanted to work on and devote my life toward, since I was honestly in high school. And apologize for the long answer, but it goes back to when I was in high school, I volunteered at a local elementary school. I grew up in Virginia Beach, Virginia. In college, I was in the Big Brothers, Big Sisters program and had a little brother in Charlottesville, Virginia, where I went to college. Then, when I moved to Washington, D.C. after college, I started at the U.S. Department of Labor, where I've now worked twenty-seven years. I didn't mean to work there for twenty-seven years, I thought I would go there for a couple of years. You know, I, I went to college outside of D.C., and very exciting to move to Washington, D.C., where young people are, you know, some of the smartest young people in the world work in D.C., and so, I wanted to be a part of that for a couple of years before going back to grad school. I've always loved government, so I thought- I've always loved government, so I thought it would be really neat to work in government for a few years before I figured out the rest of my life. When I started at the Department of Labor, I learned about youth job training programs that we have, had no idea they existed. And in the 27 years I've been working on youth job training programs, most of the people I meet every day have no idea that the programs that I work on exist. But I'm in love with the work I do and the programs that I work on. Worked on youth job training programs for at-risk youth for my entire career. I love advocating for young people, trying to help the most vulnerable young people who have, who either came from low-income backgrounds, abused backgrounds, foster care, homelessness, incarceration. And that's what our job training programs that I work on focus on. So this is the issue I care about. I lived in DC for 14 years, working on those programs, then moved to Montana for family reasons 13 years ago. Work remotely now, but the one thing I didn't get to do in DC is community work. DC is a very transient place. It doesn't have a community feel. So when our daughter was born, we moved to Montana, and I really wanted to get involved in the community, but I wanted to get involved in the community working on youth. So I spent three years at Fort Courage Childcare on their board where my daughter went. Then when my daughter moved on to Target Range for school, I spent five years on the Target Range School Board, working on that. Now my daughter's in high school. I now have two stepchildren as well, both in MCPS schools, so eighth, ninth, and 10th graders in MCPS schools. And so now here I am again, wanting to work on behalf of youth. So that's the why. The skills, so having worked for 27 years at the federal level, my job is writing policy. I've written federal regulations for the last three youth job training legislative, youth job training laws. The Job Training Partnership Act, the Workforce Investment Act, and the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. Those are the three past laws that govern our job training legislation, which funds national job training programs. I write youth policy for those programs. So I've been writing policy for years, and that was part of why I wanted to do the school board at Target Range, is I thought, oh, I can actually work on policy, but at a local level in my own community. So I have the policy-writing skills that I think I've found useful as a school board member for five years from 2016 to 2021. Obviously think that can be useful for the Missoula County School Board as well. I also have a lot of expertise in program and performance management and measurement. That's the other piece that I do for work, is I do the performance measurement piece for our youth job training programs. So I have a lot of analytical skills related to that, which are useful. And then in terms of experience, having been on a school board for five years, granted, it's not the size of MCPS, but I have the experience where I could probably jump in fairly quickly. And, you know, I did lots of MTSBA trainings in the five years I was on the school board. You know, spent lots of time with our legal representation on legal matters for our school board, so I'm familiar with that piece as well. I think I'll stop there.
What is your understanding of your role as an individual trustee where you are part of an 11-member board?
So an individual trustee has no power at all. The power is the school board as a whole. So I'm just, I would be just one of 11 members of a school board entity. So I'm familiar with the roles and responsibilities of a school board member. I reviewed a lot of your policies in the past couple of weeks and saw, like, you know, your MCPS policy and role of a school board member. I'm familiar with that. But, you know, the role is to be prepared for meetings, to listen, have a good discussion. I was really impressed with the discussion I've listened to for the last two hours. I mean that sincerely. I enjoyed the back and forth, but, you know, we did, our discussions at the Target Range School Board weren't quite as, I don't know what the word is, interesting, I'll say. So, you know, the role of the school board member is to be prepared for school board meetings, ask good questions, listen, and, you know, be a part of the school board entity.
All right. Thank you very much. So those were the two questions we have. And were we going to open it up for questions from some of the trustees, Tracy? I can't recall what we said in agenda setting.
We were just going to ask the two if you had any follow-up to anything, information you had applying.
Okay. Are there any following or clarifying questions from those two questions from a trustee?
Do you have a better word than interesting?
Seeing none. You were given instructions from Tracy and when we would notify you, et cetera, et cetera. All right. So thank you very much for your application and for being here tonight and listening to our interesting conversation.
You're welcome. Thanks for the opportunity.
Yep. Next up would be applicant Jesse King. Thank you for being here, Jesse. So we have two questions that we'll ask you, and there were a total of eight candidates, one withdrew, so there's seven that we're interviewing tonight. So we'll go ahead and ask the first question.
Okay. This question is a bit of a variation on one that you responded to in writing, but you've now had more time to think about it. So here's the question. The Board of Trustees is a collective body that relies on the skills and attributes of its members. With this in mind, please tell us why you want to be a member of the MCPS Board of Trustees, and what unique skills or attributes qualify you?
Thanks. So, I mean, I'm primarily motivated because I have two children in the district. I have a kindergartner and a fifth grader, and they'll be here for quite a while. And so I, you know, they'll be going through the schools, and I want them to have the best experience possible and make sure that the schools are operating as good as they can be. And so just when I saw that there was an opening, I wanted to make sure that that role was filled by somebody that I thought would do a good job with it. And I think you probably have a number of good candidates, but I'd be happy to help out if you think that I'm a good fit for it. So as far as other attributes, I mean, I mentioned that I have a PhD. I've been teaching for 15 years, so I have, I think I understand some of the demands of the classroom and, you know, some of the things that your staff face. I'm also in my students, or my, sorry, my children's classrooms regularly. I volunteer weekly at Chief Charlo. And so I have some experience in seeing kind of what the teachers in at least the elementary school that I'm in are dealing with. And so I think that I bring some perspective and hopefully can help if you think I'm a good fit for it.
What is your understanding of your role as an individual trustee where you're part of an 11-member board?
Yeah, so I, I mean, it's something that I think that you've probably learned from some experience, and so it's not, I haven't served as a trustee in this capacity before. I have been on a number of other professional boards and, you know, different parts of university government and stuff like that. But I understand the role of this board as setting policy, helping to provide some oversight and some accountability, but that ultimately the day-to-day operations rest within the school. And I understand the kind of chain of command that goes into running in different schools and as the board that, you know, you kind of need to stay in your lane and stay unified in the decisions that you guys are making. And so I understand that there's a public support component, there's an idea of the types of conversations that you should and shouldn't engage in with the public, you know, taking, I'm sure that you all get teachers and families and whatever that come to and bring issues to you. And I understand that the role of the board is not to say, yeah, I'll look into that, I'll take care of that for you. It's to say, go talk to your principal, you know, go talk to the superintendent, and to leave those day-to-day operations in their hands. I do think that there's a collaboration, and it seems like you guys work well in that capacity in taking guidance from your staff and from administration and working hand-in-hand with them. But, yeah, I understand that the two are very separate in that the board is not to be in the middle of everyday operations of the schools. I think that's where that question's coming from.
Any clarifying questions? Comments from anybody? All right. So we will be in touch. I know Tracy has sent you the information on if you're selected, you'll be contacted, and what you need to do to be certified, et cetera, et cetera.
Good luck to you. I know you have a long night.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Matt Baker-White. Hi, Matt. Thank you for being here. So there were a total of eight candidates who applied, seven that moved forward to tonight, one withdrew. And so we have two questions that we're asking all candidates, and so we'll just go ahead and start with question one.
Okay. As I've been explaining to people, this is sort of a variation of a question you answered in writing, but we're hoping that you've thought more about it and might have considered other things. So the Board of Trustees is a collective body that relies on the skills and attributes of its members. With this in mind, please tell us why you want to be a member of the MCPS Board of Trustees, and what unique skills or attributes qualify you?
Yeah, certainly. Thanks. And thank all of you. I just want to start by saying thank you for being here and for the lively discussion tonight, and for all the things that you do for Missoula and for MCPS. So why am I interested? I formerly have worked as a classroom educator, so I'm familiar with what classroom teachers are in the classrooms for and what they see every day. I'm committed to education. I've worked in various educational roles for my entire professional career and found that leadership is a place that I'm very comfortable and enjoy, sort of tackling structural problems. I'm the executive director of a nonprofit here in Missoula that does environmental education with university students and would love to find a way to give back to the community. In addition, I have a personal interest. I have two children and one on the way, and my oldest is currently at Rattlesnake Elementary. My other children will be in the Missoula County Public Schools for the foreseeable future, as far ahead as I can see these days, at least. And so, you know, I really value public education. I was in a public education setting for my entire K-12 years and really believe in public schools and would like to participate.
What is your understanding of your role as an individual trustee and where you are part of this 11-member board?
Yeah. So, I mean, I'll be completely honest, I'm new to the school board structure here in Missoula County, and I think I'd be excited to learn my position within the board and what specific constituents, you know, I would be particularly responsible to. I think my understanding of this seat is that it's a sort of a high school and elementary combined seat, correct? So being thoughtful about how decisions impact not just one specific school, but sort of the whole county's schools across the board. So, you know, I would want to bring sort of that thoughtful intention to the role and come as a listener and problem solver and member to consider all the different opportunities and perspectives and challenges that MCPS has.
Any clarifying questions from a trustee? Seeing none. So we will be in touch once we do our discussion and deliberation later. So thank you again, and please watch for email from Tracy.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. So next up is London.
Mr. Sanders, Sandy.
Did we already do him?
No.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, I didn't say the last name because I didn't know how to pronounce it, so thank you for saying. Hi, London. Thank you for joining us. And then you can turn your mic on by pushing the little head.
That's the first time in my life I've ever been told that I need a microphone. But I did. For you, since you are the chair.
It helps catch the sound for the video.
No problem at all.
And all the fans watching us live.
There you go.
So we had a total of eight candidates, one withdrew, so there's seven that we're interviewing tonight. We have two questions that we're asking all the candidates, same questions, so we'll go ahead and ask those with you. So thank you.
Great.
Okay. So the first question is very much like what you already answered in your written forms, but you've had more time to think about it, and you've just witnessed a meeting. So...
I did.
The Board of Trustees is a collective body that relies on the skills and attributes of its members. With this in mind, please tell us why you want to be a member of the MCPS Board of Trustees, and what unique skills or attributes qualify you?
Absolutely. Well, first and foremost, thank you for your time tonight. And I will tell you, when I received Tracy's email with everyone's applications, you guys are in a great position. I don't really think you can go wrong. Think you have a bunch of very well-qualified candidates. So we'll see what happens. As far as attributes, I've been a practicing attorney for well over 20 years, and in that role, I've learned to analyze and deal with difficult situations. And tonight was very eye-opening, just to watch the insurance presentation and to watch the various board members address. And frankly, it was so refreshing to see that so many of you had really dug in to those documents and the details and picked them apart and called them on some of the things that I think they were kind of not being very truthful about. That was refreshing. That's something that is a strength of mine. I'm also someone that knows the value of compromise. I know that here in Missoula, one thing I love about this community is that they're such a diverse group, social-economically, more and more racially, different religious groups. But I think probably the biggest thing that I see and probably the toughest challenge when I talk to teachers, my children's teachers, has been the social-economic differences, where you will have some students whose parents are making a lot of money and have every advantage. You see other students who are food insecure. And you've got to deal with all of those different approaches and all of those challenges and come up with consensus, just like here on this board. I look and I see, obviously, a lot of different backgrounds, a lot of different approaches. And I'm, you know, hopefully, if I am elected, I would love to get to know each one of you more and more and see that, because consensus has to be built, and it has to be done in a way that's best for the community, for the students, and then also for the staff and the teachers that we have. I think that's something very important. My mother was an instructional aide in a special education classroom for my entire life, and so, you know, I know the challenges there. While I'm an attorney and have some of the advantages and a lot of the disadvantages that come with that, no matter what, I'm the son of a union butcher. And, you know, I remember those days, I remember those challenges. I remember being on strike and not getting Christmas presents and having government cheese. I remember that we always had healthcare because of the benefit of the... I remember that we always had healthcare because of the benefit of the union. And I know that here on this board is something, you know, there's a strong teachers' union that has to be dealt with, that has to, you know, coordinate and, you know, come to consensus with. It's a challenge, because each, you know, the board, students, teachers, unions, they all have different priorities in mind. And I know that, you know, look, to be successful, you have to be a consensus builder. I think that's one of my strengths. I'm sorry if I went on way too long. I apologize. Yeah, I normally get paid by the minute, so, you know.
So do we, but it's a lot less.
Arlene, you're on fire tonight.
I like it. And just for the record, I've never represented Blue Cross or Blue Shield or Anthem, ever. And, you know, I'm going to give you a side story now. When I came out of law school, I was at a big international law firm and I was representing Walmart. My father, a union butcher, didn't talk to me for six months. I no longer represent Walmart and quit that quick. So I'm sorry, I'm just going to throw that out there. I think someone else has a question, or maybe it's my same, okay.
So what is your understanding of your role as an individual trustee where you're part of an 11-member board?
So I think my, you know, if I were selected to become a board member, or a trustee, excuse me, I think my role is to pay attention, to learn and take account of all the things that are on the agenda each month, for example, take the time to review them and make informed decisions, to meet with other board members, you know, within the limits of the law, obviously, and with certain amounts, to try to build consensus, get other people's opinions, to talk to stakeholders out there, the voters. I think it's really important, and, you know, a role as education, you have an obligation to keep community values in mind while not letting those community values impact the rights of minority groups within the community. That's a tough balance to do sometimes, but it's something that has to be done. And I think that, for me, that would be probably one of the biggest roles, but to be informed, to be active.
All right. Thank you very much, and please watch for an email from Tracy. Oh, clarifying questions?
Yes.
Trustee Walsh.
London, if you were elected as a lawyer, do you promise to read all of the densest material on our behalf?
You know, I gotta say, it's in my nature. Yes, I would. And, you know, I remember, first week of law school, my contracts teacher, he got up and he told us, he said, "Look, you know, contracts of adhesion," which are basically like those huge form contracts you sign at the store and everything, you know, things like that, or sign up with Charter when you get your internet, "those are not enforceable against laypeople. But you guys, now you're attorneys, you got to read everything." And so unfortunately, I don't do a lot of pleasure reading, because I get too, I get too bared down into contracts and things like that. So you absolutely have my commitment to do that, a firm commitment. And also frankly, just to be clear, this isn't something I'm just trying to do for a little six-month jaunt, because I have nothing better to do than the next six months. You know, if selected, I absolutely plan to run in May and hopefully join you for the long term.
Trustee Davy.
Oh, no. Okay, I saw what you did with the insurance. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
No, I'm just curious what kind of law you practice.
Sure. I actually practice, for the most part, employment law and do a lot of wage-and-hour law. And so that's one thing that, I mean, frankly, was very interesting, when I saw the presentation about the pay for the people on call and the like. I do a lot of wage-and-hour law, and I would definitely bring that expertise to the policies that the district considers, because there are federal laws that apply to the district, and we don't want to do anything that may be violate. I think you're in good shape. But, you know, I just, but, yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
That's it? Come on, someone's got to have a tough one for me. Nothing? Okay, well, thank you very much all for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, and the next one is Sheri O'Leary.
Thank you for being here. We had a total of eight applicants for this law, and seven were interviewing tonight as one has withdrew. So we have two questions that we're asking all the candidates tonight.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me. It's been a really warm invitation.
Okay, for the first question, it's a bit of a rewrite of one you've already answered in writing, but you've had more time to think about it, and so we thought we'd pose it slightly differently. The Board of Trustees is a collective body that relies on the skills and attributes of its members. With this in mind, please tell us why you want to be a member of the MCPS Board of Trustees and what unique skills or attributes qualify you.
All right, here, let me get closer. Is this mic on? Yes, okay. I would love to be part of the trustees, because I really value education and children and anyone involved in the future of weaving the civic foundation of Missoula. And I come to this because I have an interest in emotional intelligence and social emotional, social and emotional learning, and how to implement policies and curriculum that helps children learn how to communicate with people that they find different. Our culture today, our country is very divided, and I believe that through social and emotional learning and emotional intelligence understanding, that we can create a support for children so that they can reach across divides and create this civic framework of community that I really value about Missoula. I'm currently a master's of public administration student, and so I've been trying to build social capital and work with administration, and currently I'm serving as Chair of Missoula Cities, the City of Missoula's Affordable Housing Resident Oversight Committee. So I get to have that sort of, this sort of environment there, but we do not have people coming in to talk about insurance. I can't tell you that we've even had one person come in and talk to our board, which is good, that they trust us with this, the fund and allocating that money. And I'm hoping I've touched on that, that all the bullet points of that question.
What is your understanding of your role as an individual trustee where you're part of an 11-member board?
There's a lot of showing up and listening to each other, being creative with solutions, inviting community and faculty to share their ideas, and welcoming community to share their moral foundations and bridging moral foundations to, so that people, like, there was an example I just gave in one of my classes on the moral foundation of sanctity. Some people may find sanctity in tradition and religion. Someone else might find sanctity in belonging and inclusion. But then, as a school board, we find sanctity as lifting children in their education and with dignity and guiding them through that process. I believe that the school trustees meet together to follow the Missoula County Public Schools' mission and vision, and all the discussions and disagreements would all be solved, like, understanding what the, based on the mission and the vision of the school.
All right. Are there any clarifying questions from a trustee? All right, thank you for being here tonight, and please watch for email from Tracy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Denise Juno.
Please. Oh, Brian.
Just in time.
Just in time. Three hours? Saw a lot of hard work there. Thank you for being here. So we had eight candidates, applicants, and seven were interviewing tonight as one have withdrew from the application process. We have two questions that we'll ask, that we ask the same question to all of you tonight. So we'll go ahead and move forward with those questions.
Okay, the first question is a bit like what you already wrote in the application at first, but it's slightly different, plus you've had more time to think about it. The Board of Trustees is a collective body that relies on the skills and attributes of its members. With this in mind, please tell us why you want to be a member of MCPS Board of Trustees and what unique skills or attributes qualify you.
Sure. So I think, well, public education is sort of in my DNA. My family, we're all educators. My mom and dad were both counselors and administrators. My grandmother was a school cook for 28 years. My grandfather was a bus driver. So I kind of grew up in a family that just embraced public education. And I became, I started my career as a paraprofessional in the system and went to teacher, you know, worked at the State Education Agency and Indian Education for All, doing the implementation of that. Eventually ran for the top job there, served as state superintendent for eight years. Went to Seattle Public Schools and learned a lot about leadership in that position. I was the superintendent of Seattle Public Schools through the pandemic. So if you were around then, you know how difficult public education had at that point in time. And so I've been out of public education now for a little bit. I worked for Bozeman Health for a few years. I'm doing some consulting now. And so I just think I bring a really rich perspective from all different kinds of points of view through an education system. I've dealt with big budgets at state level and in Seattle Public Schools, dealt with, in Seattle, we had 104 schools, we had a very diverse student body. We had like 103 different languages that we worked through, big staff, great principals, great teachers. And so, you know, when I was state superintendent, we worked on graduation matters, which actually was born here in Missoula County Public Schools and brought it up to the state level, and were able to raise graduation rates to historic highs two years in a row. Worked on student achievement much of my life. And so I just think I have this wealth of experience. And, you know, there's, I think we're in a time now where people have been asking me a lot about what can I do? What can I do to make a difference? And I've been preaching and preaching to people, we need to act locally. This is a time when we really need to be engaged in our local community and do all that we can to raise us up, raise us all up. And so when I heard about this vacancy, you know, I sort of like, well, that might be interesting, you know, it's a short little gig for, you know, unless I decide to run for it. And so it could be a really cool experience. And I feel like the school board is the most local elected board anyone can belong to. And I think it is truly one of the hardest elected positions in any sort of government setting, because you deal with a lot. I mean, the insurance conversation tonight was fascinating to me, and just from that show of what you all are engaged in, just the thoughtfulness of the questions you all brought, the engagement you had, it shows that you're not just going through motions. Like, you asked really hard-hitting questions, and I thought that was really great, looking out for employees, thinking about students, your strategic plan. I know you're going into strategic planning. That's exciting to me, because it's really laying the groundwork for the future and the next generation. And I think schools have the ability to look forward and think about what a community can be, and that's really what school boards are about. And so I'm excited about the opportunity to bring my skills and experience to bear in this type of setting.
What is your understanding of your role as an individual trustee where you're part of an 11-member board?
So I was the superintendent of Seattle Public Schools, and we had seven members on our school board. Just throwing that out there. And I guess, you know, seeing it from, you know, Superintendent Hill's perspective, I can definitely understand the difference between a board member role and a superintendent role. The school board hires a superintendent, sets the vision, sets the policy, expects the superintendent and his team to, or her team, to implement it. And I think when you are an individual, bringing your strengths and uniqueness to a board like this, you know, you can see it play out as different issues arise. Some people are really skilled in finance, some skilled in insurance, some are skilled in teaching and learning, some are skilled in HR. And we all come from a lifelong experience that we bring to bear when you're sitting as an individual school board member, which I think makes the entire board richer, because the questions and the perspectives that you can bring to an entire board makes you better. And so I think individuals bring their own strengths and uniqueness, lends to the entire board, and also, you know, I think even though there may be disagreements, you work it out, and when the board acts, that is the direction of the district, and you learn to kind of go along with that. And so I really think, you know, just the conversation you all had tonight kind of makes me think of where you all are, and it kind of gets me excited about the role that I could play in that.
All right. Any clarifying questions from a trustee? Trustee Davy.
I also accepted my, or I accepted a position on the board that was a short, you know, it was like nine months until the election. And I know that when I joined, I wasn't sure whether or not I was going to run. And then what I learned was that it took that six to nine months to like really build the relationships. And so I'm curious, I know you sound like you don't know whether or not you're going to run, but I'm curious where you're landing on that at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I honestly can say I don't know. I mean, right now, if I had to answer, I would be leaning in the direction of doing so. But I kind of want to get a feel for what it's all about, too, and kind of know that I can contribute, like, I want to be able to be sure that I can be a contributing member to the board before making a final decision on that.
Any other clarifying questions? CNN? Well, thank you for being here tonight. And please watch for an email from Tracy.
All right, great. Thank you. Thank you.
Next up is Jess Noe. I think that's how you say, "Noe"? I can't remember. She went to law school here. Hi, Jess. Thank you for being here tonight.
Absolutely.
So we had a total of eight applicants, one withdrew, so we're interviewing seven tonight, and we're asking all the interviewees the same two questions.
Great.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the first question, which is a bit of a rewrite of one that you've already written about, but we But we figured with more time to think about it, that you might want to do more with it. So the Board of Trustees is a collective body that relies on the skills and attributes of its members. With this in mind, please tell us why you want to be a member of the MCPS Board of Trustees, and what unique skills or attributes qualify you.
Thank you guys for that question and for being here tonight, and for your obvious passion around the main topic of tonight's meeting. It's great to know that you guys are responsible for keeping the funds of the school and the health of the teachers and the community top of mind. So thank you for that. My interest in joining the school board is based in my experience. I'm a financial advisor. I work at the Charles Schwab branch here in town. I manage about $1.6 billion worth of relationships in northwest Montana. With that, my financial eye is something that I'm always looking through, right? That's the lens in which I view the world. And I look at the roles and responsibilities of this group as an elected body as to be good stewards of the resources that this community has, right? Collecting taxes and paying it back to teachers is a zero-sum game, right? That money doesn't come from somewhere else, it comes from this community. And it's a responsibility of the 11 members of this board to ensure that you're good stewards of it. And so knowing that I come with 15 years' worth of financial experience managing assets, you know, in line or larger than budgets of school districts around the state, makes me feel like I'd be a competent addition to the team to help provide the insight that that financial experience provides me.
What is your understanding of your role as an individual trustee where you're part of an 11-member board?
To listen, to take in the concerns of the community, whether that be the teachers that we serve or the students that we serve, or the community members at large that fund the operations of the district. The place that one individual plays is to make sure that the team has good representation there all of the time, listening ears to make sure that the details are being caught and that the right questions are being asked, champions of fiscal responsibility, right? To make sure that we have money, not only not for now, but money for tomorrow, right? We saw a lot of districts across the country struggling more than others during COVID. And a lot of that falls down to how they prepared for it. Whether you're an individual family member, you're an organization like a school district, or you're a business like Charles Schwab, all of those things need to have contingency plans for when times aren't good. And that's where I feel like I would add the most value to this board by ensuring that we were looking at our options with a fiscally responsible mind.
All right, any clarifying questions from a trustee? Sina, thank you for being here tonight, and please watch for an email from Tracy. All right, so now I will... We will need to have a motion and a second to open board discussion. So I'm open? Oh yeah, no, this, so like I said, this is a public process. And we interviewed each individual, individually? That was weird. Yeah, no, and then so there, they can come back in if they wanted to, or they can watch online later with the massive crowd watching already. So, but yeah, no, so that's, we just, as the board leadership, when we had the last interview process with trustee McShane, we felt like we needed to have them out when we interviewed, just in that process. So that was one of the reasons why the board leadership chose this style. But that's something we can talk about in strategic planning. If there's a process we want to formalize our procedure as a board, because there's nothing in the books per se. We do look at what MTBSA has, et cetera, but this is something that is solely left locally to us to figure out how we want to do this.
So someone makes a motion for a candidate, and then we vote on it, or?
Motion second, then that opens. There needs to be a motion and a seconded motion for us to open up the discussion.
A motion that we placed Denise Juno and thank her tirelessly for even agreeing to do this and be on the board.
Can we open up for discussion first before the motion?
No, for us to have the discussion, we need to have a motion and a seconded. And then if, we can always do a friendly amendment if needed after the discussion. So there's a motion on the table, is there a second?
Can I ask a question again about the motion? So this is basically opening up the discussion. We've given a name, but
And it's now seconded by?
Now it's open for discussion to talk about everyone.
Motion by trustee Whitaker. Sorry, trustee Davy beat you. Okay, now the board, now it's open for discussion. Trustee McShane.
I guess I want to think of it in terms of what are the skill sets that we're seeking to operate effectively as a board? The person that we're replacing was a wonderful voice, incredibly thorough in doing work and just always showing up and being very much right on point. So I guess part of my question is, you know, are there skill sets that we think would work well to keep the board moving forward effectively?
It's open for discussion. Trustee Walsh.
You know, what I so appreciated about Cohen was his law background. He was just so good at having eyes to see things I never did. And I know we have two applicants that both have law backgrounds. And I think that's definitely something I'm mourning with the loss of Cohen.
First, I just wanted to say I was astonished, pleased, and delighted to see so many applicants. But at the same time, it makes it very difficult to select one because it seems to me that the whole pool are talented, people with lots of credentials and concern for education. So at this point, I'm not sure where to go, except to say that when we asked our questions, I felt that some people understood the second question differently than others. In other words, we were asking about the role of an individual trustee, not within the board, rather than the first question, which says, what do you bring? And so to me, listening to people talk about that, it seemed to me that only a few really realized that as a board member, you're just one of the people that has a discussion, but once the vote is there, you support whatever was voted on. Now, I'm not saying that people didn't, but some people took that from the question, some people did not. Which, and to some extent, that's probably a function of whether they've ever been on a board before, as much as anything else. So I was looking at that. And then I certainly agree with the idea that it would be nice to have a person who knows everything that I don't know and everything that you don't know. And, you know, so that we have, again, a balance of what people know and appreciate about education, et cetera. I mean, my biggest failing is when I think of education, I go immediately to college. I wonder why, you know? Other people apparently know everything there is to know about insurance. But we do want somebody that can fit into the whole board and make that kind of contribution.
Trustee Whitaker.
Okay, so, agree, all the things. We have an election coming up in May where four seats are. And so there's ample opportunity for the amazing people that came tonight to come out and again, come. This is a temporary assigned position based on Cohen's resignation. Cohen was, I've learned so much from Cohen. He has the exact opposite skill set that I do. Like the exact opposite skill set that I do. But we do have a lawyer on the board sitting next to me right now, who I also think does a damn fine job reading through the fine lines and giving... We have the opportunity to have the state superintendent of Montana, who was born and bred literally for public education, to have the opportunity to experience Denise's expertise is something I will never, ever walk away from. And resume-wise, resume-building, the way you answer the questions, I've worked with her on different things over the last five, I don't know, 13 years that I've been here. And she's phenomenal to partner with and to work with, and the skill set is just there. But I understand where things are going. I guess I'm not in much of a negotiation mood at nine o'clock at night. I greatly value every last one of you that is sitting in that audience, like thank you. But I think if you really knew Denise, you would understand where I'm coming from.
Any, trustee Davy?
Yeah, I mean, I'm genuinely blown away and excited to see so many actually qualified people. I know it hasn't always been easy for us to have people show up. And so that is exciting. And I agree with Meg that there is election coming up. I hope you don't run against me, but it's open. It's a joke, it's not intimidation. And I just want to also say, like, I really miss Cohen's voice. But it is really clear to me that Denise Juno, I mean, understands multiple layers of how education works, and it's such an opportunity for all of us to be able to learn from that. And, you know, and I do actually think it's important to think about her heritage too, and to think about the importance that having a place-based Montana native can add, right, to have more than one. I think it's really, it's really important. And so I would vote yes on Meg's motion.
Trustee Witt.
I finally decided to talk tonight after everyone else talked. And I oddly know a decent amount about insurance, but clearly nothing in comparison to some other people around, because like I at least knew what stop-loss and all that stuff was, but I did not know all those details. But as far as this goes, like, I'm probably with kind of the consensus here in that, like, I read through the resumes, you know, and it was just in the order that was in the packet. Like I started when it came out, what, Friday is when it hits my email? So I started reading through all those resumes, and I was just like, oh, that one looks good. And then go to the next one, I was like, oh, that one's also good. And I was just really impressed all the way through. And then I get to Denise, and I was like, oh, you've got to be kidding me. Like, yeah, it really just was amazing to kind of go through and see all that interest from, like, people that didn't have an axe to grind either, which is always a fear of mine when people are trying to come into a board like this, is that they're like, I have this one issue, and I've complained about it, and I'm going to bring it up, and I'm going to try to do it on the board. And I didn't see that at all. I didn't hear that at all. And I'm just really impressed with everybody. And, but in the end, it's like you have the opportunity to have someone that was a superintendent in charge of 104 schools, and then also was the state OPI, like... That's, like, I can't think of any better experience or more qualified person that you could have show up. So it is hard as it can be to say, like, yeah, I got to pick one of these. Ended up being like, well, it's just that one set of experience and the amount we can learn from that, I think is huge, so that's all I've got.
Trustee McShane.
On the flip side of having such an amazing well of experience, I think it's fair to ask a question whether that would dim other voices here. I think clearly this is an amazing applicant, yes. And then, I mean, as the newbie on the block, I'm still learning so much that clearly others don't have the learning curve that I do. And I get that. But I just wonder, in terms of the balance of voices, whether having that above-the-line level of expertise would change the other voices that always contribute here? And it's just a question that I have in this circumstance.
Trustee Hayes.
I also think Denise is an amazing candidate. But I also want to shed light to the fact that we have so many candidates with kids in our district. And to me, that's huge, to have the kids, because they have a vested interest. And yes, I believe Denise does as well. But it's something profound, I think, as a parent, to come out and run for the school board. So I, I mean, we have, I just want to say, you guys are amazing. And I'm so glad Jenny and I didn't have to run against you. So, very happy about that. But for me, I think about, I signed up to do this for my kids. And just throwing that out there.
So, any other final discussion points before Chair goes? Trustee Whitaker.
All of kids in Missoula are our kids now. And I think that people that are the most vested in positions are people that don't have personal stake. No deference to you, because part of my decision to run was because of my child. But to me, I just don't think that that should be a factor. And I, you know, I just, we're in it for all of Missoula's kids.
Thanks, Chair Walker Andrews.
This is my second school board. I was on a school board when I had a child from kindergarten, and then six years of that followed by my husband for six years. And then I've been a member of this school board with no children in this. And it's not that different. You really do care about all of the kids, so. I mean, I appreciate your perspective, but having both of them, I think, I can say that.
Trustee Davy.
Leslie, I really appreciate that perspective, and I definitely was thinking about that too. And also, I'm not going to be quiet. Sorry.
No, don't be quiet. I am in support of the motion on the table, not only because of who the candidate is, because they're all strong candidates. This being my third term on this school board, it was hard for us to even get one applicant for many other positions on this school board. So when we saw eight, and how exciting that was for us to see people wanting to join and be an impact, not only on education, but public education. And so that's what I listened for tonight, was who spoke about public education? Who spoke about community, local control? A lot of that is what, because that's what's been in my head as chair of this board, has been. So, and when I first was on school board, I was the only school board member out of the 11, besides Jeff, who was actually a parent. There were no other trustees that had children at that time in the school district. So I think it's just those three things of the community. So I think it's just those three things of the community and public education are really high on my list as a leader in this community. But it does bring to light that, you know, we have so many, not only do we have to crunch numbers and do budget agreements, but we also have to choose someone. And as hard as that will be tonight, because all of you are great, like I have, I'm glad I will be the tie, if we need to vote, I will be that tie vote. So we'll see how, where we go from here. But I think I would encourage everybody to, to apply to be on the ballot next year. And it's always scary to put your name on a ballot, but it's so empowering because you are taking that next step to be an elected official versus being appointed by a board tonight, if that makes sense. So that's what I have to say in regards to that, but I am in support of the motion on the table. Any other final comments or thoughts before we move on to the vote?
Can I move to take two people?
Your spot? Micah's spot?
We, uh, 12. Seattle had seven.
Yes, trustee Walsh.
I just wanted to speak to Leslie's comment too, because it is so easy to feel intimidated by each and every one of the wonderful trustees on this board. We do all have such different strengths and skillsets that I'm just endlessly impressed with, you know, just everything Arlene knows, you know? I'm always like, but I don't think, I don't think that'll be an issue on this board. I think we all are proud of our strong personalities.
Yeah, and I think the board leadership, I think we do a great job. Like I keep continuing to make sure people explain different things as the new trustee on the board. So I think it really comes down to the board leadership as well when it comes to your concern, trustee McShane, that we really try to keep that from happening to overpowering one voice over another. I think we do a great job here at Missoula County Public Schools. All right, so let's move on to the vote. So there's a motion on the table, move to appoint, oh, that is not on my little sheet So any public comment? See none? We'll move on to the vote. The motion on table is to appoint Denise Juno to replace, to sit in place of Cohen Mercer, who is doing great things for our state as well now. So all those in favor for the motion on the table, please indicate yes by raising your So all, all in favor, welcome aboard trustee Juno.
And we really mean please run, those of you that are still sitting there.
The time is now 9:11, we are adjourned.